All right. You all ready?
Six o'clock on Swatch Watch.
Yeah.
That's not it. Time for six o'clock on the Swatch Watch.
All right. Good evening. So I call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thomas, roll call, please.
Mr. Payne.
Present.
Mr. Snook.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Ms. McGill.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Are there any announcements? No announcements? We don't have any proclamations today, all right? Ms. Thomas, we're ready for...oh, we need some...
Yeah.
Oh, that was announcement. Go ahead.
I move that the council appoint the following to its boards and commissions. For the Community Development Block Grant Task Force, Kim Spalding. The Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood Task Force, Kathy Johnson-Harris and Keddie Rupnick. The Measurements and Solutions Group, Deshade Cooper, Matthew Ellison, Walter Heinecke, Billy Hunt, Ryan LaRochele, Joe Sekos, and Kevin Healy. And to the Sister Cities Commission, Damon Erby. This evening, we will not be making any announcements particularly to anyone in particular for the Police Civilian Review Board. Our next step is to interview candidates. Council has discussed the full set of candidates that we've received applications from and has narrated on some that we will be conducting interviews with, but until all applicants are notified, we will not be making that announcement. We will say that applicants for both the one position for racial or social justice representative as well as the non-voting member with law enforcement experience is one that we will be reopening because we do not have applicants that fit that criterion. But under the general membership as well as those that are coming from historically disadvantaged or that have traditionally experienced desperate policing, those are the ones that we will be interviewing for those six positions. A motion and a second. I'm sorry, I do have to go back for the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood Task Force. We also will be reopening the Ridge Street Business Owner because... This is new on the fly. We haven't made that appointment. That appointment will be to Chris Meyer for the business owner role, so I apologize. I did not have that information. So I made a motion on those appointments. I gave some additional information. Apologize, I probably should have done that separately. So we need to just vote on these appointments.
Need a second.
Second, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we have a voting button today.
Oh, we got buttons.
So please vote.
Look, to your right.
Yeah, Lloyders is on the right. It's a very confusing seat.
Oh.
I know it well.
So that carries Fab to zero.
Madam Mayor, I was supposed to have jumped in before we got to that particular item to ask that we add something to the agenda. Could I make a motion to add an item to the agenda at this point?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add an item three, a resolution endorsing the "We Are Still In" letter to the Virginia General Assembly.
All right, so we'll...does that need to be other business or do we...
It would be added as...
Number three.
Item three if there's a second and...
A second?
And then vote.
All right, please vote.
Thank you.
And just for the PCRB, the two categories for...and maybe this is something we have a discussion about, but we were thinking that an organization like Legal Aid or someone like that, I think we have a probably, based on the number that applied, individual to fit the other categories, but we didn't have anyone that noted in their application that that is...that they were a social justice advocate and activist and what that list looked like. So want to open that back up and then we didn't have the law enforcement member either. Okay. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, A, minutes, December 2nd, 2019, regular meeting, December 16th, special meeting. B, appropriation, runaway emergency shelter program grant, $209,444, second reading. C, appropriation, human services fund balance for Pacham, transportation costs, $20,000, first of two readings. There's a correction to D, that is an appropriation instead of resolution, state criminal alien assistance program, SCAP grant for 2019, $4,478, first of two readings. E, resolution, legislative theater workshop and belonging and cultural democracy workshop, one reading. F, ordinance, amending section 2-5 of chapter two of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, financial disclosure by certain officers and employees, first of two readings.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion?
I would move to remove item C from the consent agenda.
It sounds like we're just going to actually discuss that separately and we can vote on it separately after...yeah. So we're going to pull it for now. So I move that we adopt the consent agenda with item C pulled for a separate vote.
Second.
All right, please vote. All right, and Counselor Payne?
We're not doing it right now. We can do it right now, Mr. Blair said.
Pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-3112, I am disqualifying myself from this vote because I have a personal interest in the transaction due to my employment with Pacham. I have filed the required disclosure statement with the clerk of counsel.
All right.
So I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt appropriation, item C, human services fund balance for Pacham.
Is there a second?
I'll second it again.
All right, please vote. Carries four and one abstention. All right, City Manager's response to Community Matters from the January 6th council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the public. I don't have anything to report from our last meeting, but I will also say to Ms. Beard, Mr. Long, and Ms. Carey that Mr. Williams said that he's working on a grant to possibly look at putting benches at bus stops in various areas throughout the city. So he is working on that piece and then also too, the question was asked about transportation on Sundays, expanding it, and we're actually looking at that in terms of having to hire additional bus drivers to make that one day a possibility, but not in the very near future, but looking in the future to be able to provide expanded services on Sundays. That finalizes my report.
All right, next we have Community Matters. First up, we have William Atwood.
Good evening. My name is William Atwood. Practice architecture in town. I've been here since 1975, waiting for this group to gather, get something done. First, I'd burn that zoning code. Would never use the word zoning again. Zoning belongs on an airline ticket and specifically for that use. You can sit only in that zone. You got to lose that language. I've worked with codes in eight states for all these years. The 1955 subdivision code is everywhere. It has not been removed. You have to start from scratch. You look at your own matrix. It speaks of setbacks, craziness. By the time you whittle down what's left to put a house on, there's no room for the house at all. The whole town needs to be R2. That's a fact. It's a national movement. It's a good movement. Why? Because the second house in R2 can actually sit on a 2,000-square-foot lot. So you can own land in this town with an R2 use. Third and finally, well, also, I hope you get along. I'm not going to say behave because I don't. But basically, I ask you sincerely to remove housing from any mass document. Housing is not a category. It's a goal. The Housing Handbook, which I hope you'll develop, will allow housing to be in places that we in my generation have never put housing. We have had highway commercial. We have destroyed 29 North because there's no housing. A good example, if there was housing on 29 North, it would be a much better place. So not...don't eliminate a work. Try to create a scenario that assists people to build smaller houses in areas where you can actually build a house for $150,000. I think we're the only ones that did it over in Fiveville, but it took a condominium to do a freestanding house for $150,000. It's now so, you know, it's like everything's stuck to it. It's hard to tear it off and get back down to the real price of what a house can cost, but it's a flat-out excuse to say prices are too high. We have too many roads. Get rid of them. Put some street housing. We've got too many garages. Buy air rides. Put housing on them. People have come to me, young people, that actually rent in the most challenging places in this town to live here. When I sold my architecture firm, nobody lived here except me. And so, we're too expensive. We have plenty of land. We don't need any more excuses. We just need to get on it now, get creative. I don't think that, and I've said this and I've met with a lot of...I don't think apartments are workforce housing unless landlords are held to certain amounts of money. I think ownership gets you in the game and there's plenty of land for that here. Plenty of land for it. So we need to get on it. Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you. Wilson Hunter.
Hi, Wilson Hunter. This is my first time at a meeting. Pretty close here, but thank you all for your service, first of all. This is just a very basic issue, so I'll probably be out of here in 30 seconds. I work across the street from the police station on Market...on East Market. I've noticed over the past year that the flags are flown incorrectly over the police station. They're often at half-mast when they're supposed to be at full mast. I noticed that because I often look on the news to see why flags are flying at half-mast in our country and it happens potentially weekly at the police station. Also, when they are supposed to be flying at half-mast, they're often drenched in rain and laying on top of a puddle on top of the police station. So that's the issue I have. Hopefully, we can fix it and that's all.
Thank you. I'm Garrett Trent.
My name is Garrett Trent. I'm a Charlottesville city resident. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. So first, let me say thank you to Dr. Richardson and staff for recommending the allocation of 700,000 in funds from your surplus into the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. That is very much appreciated and I fully support that recommendation and hope council will support it as well. While there is a significant amount of funding set aside for affordable housing for very critical projects such as public housing, friendship court redevelopment, vouchers, housing rehab, the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund provides just a critical, flexible funding pool that allows us to act on opportunities as they arise. If you just think about the C-SRUP voucher program, Carlton Views, Affordable Homes on Nassau Street, and the crossings too. All of these really critical projects and opportunities sprung from unpredictable situations and innovative partnerships that would not have been possible without the funding from the CAF. As a result of having that flexible funding pool, hundreds of families are now in affordable housing. In addition to helping fund these projects, the CAF helps us leverage millions of dollars of state and federal funding for affordable housing. I work with Habitat for Humanity. I know how important the CAF has been in helping hundreds of low-income families become homeowners in our community. A specific example, when we receive funding through the Affordable and Special Needs Housing Program, that requires a 25% match from funds that are specifically administered and controlled by the local government. So if we apply for a million dollars, we need at least 250,000 in a city match or that money is lost. So, and with that, dozens of affordable housing opportunities, affordable home ownership opportunities go away. And that's just for Habitat. Without this robust CAF, we are leaving millions of state and federal affordable housing funds on the table and many families left out in the cold. So I want, again, I want to thank you for your support of the CAF and as you look ahead to the FY '21 budget, please focus the attention on the fact that only 800,000 has been allocated for the CAF. We expect the crossings two is going to be ready. That would consume almost the entirety of the current allocation. And so, that's not going to leave funds available for homeownership and other opportunities. So I just ask to the audience if you're in support of creating more affordable homeownership opportunities. I would ask you please stand. Thank you very much.
And I'll just add really quickly for other people who are going to speak that Counselor Hill spoke with staff last week and council members were pretty much in support. I mean, I have some thoughts that I'll share when we do the...when we have the discussion, but there will be dollars going back into that fund and maybe at that amount that has been requested. I'm pretty sure there's support for it. So that's why it was added back to...
And do you want to share the CRHA update too or no?
I don't think so. Okay. Alyssa Duncan.
Madam Mayor and city councilors, my name is Alyssa Duncan and I'm a student at PVCC and I use the bus many times a week to get to school, work, and other places around town. Over the past year or so, I've discovered several issues with the transit system in Charlottesville. The first is that there are no buses that run near McIntyre Plaza Shopping Center where Seabill Coffee and Circle are located. There are buses that run towards and even right next to other business hubs such as Barracks Road Shopping Center, Fashion Square Mall, the Downtown Mall, and West Main Street. I'm requesting that the city look into the possibility of serving the Harris Street corridor with a bus. Secondly, there are some buses that stop running earlier than they are supposed to. It is not regular and not on the schedule. When this happens, the CAT app shows that there are multiple buses on other routes such as the Route 7 or 5, but none on the routes I need. Other buses run infrequently and can't be relied on to arrive on time. I realize that some routes have much heavier use than others, but for those of us that rely on the transit system to get around town, these unscheduled shutdowns can have massive impacts. The next thing is the Route 1 bus. This is the only bus that serves PVCC. The bus is used by a lot of students who rely on the bus to get to class on time. Because this bus only comes once an hour and only passes through bus stops if no one is waiting, it is incredibly easy to miss. As a student, if you miss the bus, you miss your class. I suggest that the route needs another bus added so that the bus comes every half an hour for students instead of every hour. Another suggestion for this route is that it stops at the main building of PVCC on its way to the Dickinson Building. Some drivers anticipate that most students get off at the main building and so will stop here before going to Dickinson, but it is not consistent and not part of their actual route. Lastly, I still request that CAT seeks to partner with PVCC so that students can ride free like UVA-affiliated and city employees. The cost to ride the bus is $100 a semester, which is more than some of the textbooks for our classes. And while our books can be covered by financial aid, it does not cover bus passes. These issues are concerns felt by many of the students at PVCC. Thank you for listening to my concerns and I hope that you will do what you can to make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Freyley.
Kate Freyley, city resident. Hi. I have a couple things. The first one is I just want to make sure that I understand correctly that the surplus $50,000 for the PCRB will last until July and so then a line item for the PCB will be in the next fiscal year budget.
And we're going to have that discussion during the...
Oh, okay. All right. And the other things...I forgot my glasses...are to say thank you. So one of the things I want to thank you for is that when we were talking about the PCRB and there were questions about what policies, general orders, would the board want, Mayor Walker told us they would be in the police department's website by January and they are. Thank you very much. In relation to the recent issue about cameras in black neighborhoods, the police department has a quote, "City Camera Security System General Order," which I found on the website, thanks to you, and the procedure says in item four, procedure number C, two, "Security cameras are not commonly monitored under normal operating conditions but may be monitored by designated CPD personnel for legitimate safety and security purposes to include, but are not limited to monitoring restricted access areas or locations, monitoring traffic for special events, conducting criminal investigations, and enhancing response of public safety agencies such as police, fire, and emergency medical services." In the policy, there is...I would like to know if the cameras were watched 24/7 and what their stated purpose was. Those four cameras that are no longer on, apparently. In the policy, there is no mention of civilian access or public access to footage or civilian influence on the decision to place the cameras or any information that is...that is, might be supplied to civilians about their use. Maybe the PCRB can make some policy recommendations about this to grow police transparency. I have sent you links just now to three articles about disproportionate use and efficacy of cameras, surveillance cameras. Another thing, Ms. Thomas, thank you for making the PCRB website available or easy to use so the documents of the initial board are accessible. In the past, we had been told when we were talking about the transparency of the selection of the board that the names and their applications...Ms. Hill, you had mentioned that they would be on the website and they aren't. So ideally, those application names and that non-personal part of the application would be on even before the deadline so the public could help recruit. Please support affordable housing and money for the PCRB. Thank you.
And I'll just comment on the policy that was just an effort with, you know, Chief Brackney. You know, they were first trying to update the policies because a lot of them were outdated and then attempting to figure the process out with our system and there's an overhaul of the website system across the board. And one of the meetings that we had when attorney stated that our system was basically dated back into the 70s, I mean, there were some challenges just figuring those out, but it wasn't just me. I mean, Chief Brackney was, you know, trying to make sure and on schedule with the policies being online and accessible. Angel Turner.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Hello. How y'all doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Okay. So, my name is Angel Turner and I'm a Charlottesville city resident. First, I want to say thank you all for all the hard work you do. Second of all, I want to say I'm a mother, first of all. Second of all, I'm a homeowner as well and I also proudly work for Habitat for Humanity. Okay? We'll just get that out. First and foremost, I want to talk about all the support you guys have been given. Thank you for your continued support for affordable housing, but also, I also want to thank you guys for the funds that you guys have been allocating towards affordable housing. That's something that I want to make sure that you guys do. So, and, yeah. And then I want to share a little bit of my story. So, I'm from Charlottesville. I grew up here. I went to high school here, graduated from high school here. I also left Charlottesville and then I came back and when I came back, I was a CRHA resident and I also gave birth to my son and I was raising him there at first, but also I knew that that was something that I didn't want for him. Like I didn't want him growing up in public housing. There's nothing wrong with housing, but I wanted a better future for my child. So I decided to apply for Habitat for Humanity as well. I went through their program. It took me about three and a half years to do that. It was a lot of hard work. I went through things such as financial coaching classes, many hours on a construction site, over 200 and something hours that I put in year-round for a while and I thought that was really fun and also I got to meet some of my market-rate neighbors. Hold on a second. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I worked really hard to purchase my home through Habitat for Humanity, but I wanted to let you guys know that something that really touched my heart was having this home really means having a place where my son can grow up and like having a stable household and not having to move or not having to worry about where we're going to live or how I'm going to pay my rent and also having a community that I now consider home and I consider like a community as a family because my community is like, I feel for me is really tight-knit and it also helped me...they also help out as far as things are concerned with my son because I am a single mom. But I have some facts for you guys. So, thank you all for still what you do, but the homeownership rate in Charlottesville and Albemarle County... But the homeownership rate in Charlottesville and Albemarle County for whites are fifty-six percent and for blacks are, but only twenty-nine percent for African-Americans in this community. This is a problem, but I know you guys have the power to change this through the Affordable Housing Fund. And I would appreciate if you guys continue to support affordable housing because it helps people like me and people that I see every day come through the door at my job. Um, who y'all gonna kick me out yet? Hold on. Hold it, my last, uh, wait. I'm going to get it. Let me get it. Hold on, my last, uh, got it. Okay. So, I just want to tell you guys, thank you again and continue to support affordable housing and thank you for the opportunity for me and my family and other families to prosper in this community. So please support affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, you know, one quick thing. I know the next, probably, I think it's the next, I don't work at Habitat, so I don't know, but housing dedication, that's a house on Saturday, but it's a house on Sixth Street. And my friend lived in that house and it was her first home that she brought and she lost the house during, because of the housing burst and the mortgage that she got. And so, when my son came home and said one of his friends was moving into the house, that's just one of the things that, because it's an area that there's a lot of displacement happening and for Habitat to work, you know, to purchase that home and to make it one of the homes for the family. And there was a lot of work that needed to be done and to do it and to know how happy they are with the house. So we know the stories personally, too. And I just wanted to, you know, share that one, because where normally the families who buy that, it becomes a market rate property and that's, you know, so. We understand. Mason Pickett?
Mason Pickett, Albemarle County. I want to remind you of something that you may have wanted to forget, but first I want to speak to the cameras. I'm all for cameras. In the UK, I'm very familiar with the cameras over there. They are everywhere. The only people that don't like the cameras are the people that are breaking the law. Well, it's just a fact. Now, what I want, what I wanted to remind you of is that when Trump was running for office, the left said that he would just ruin the economy. Well, maybe that didn't turn out to be that way, did it? Maybe more black people are being employed than ever. Maybe the stock market is making new highs every day, but you got to be involved. You got to be participating. Nice to everybody. It was a pleasure.
Vicky Bravo?
Hi. I'm Vicky Bravo. I live in the city and I'm here tonight representing IMPACT. We're in coalition with Click and Chalk tonight on the issue of funding for the CAF. We all know we're in a housing crisis. We very much appreciate and thank Dr. Richardson and staff for recommending to allocate at least seven hundred thousand dollars of this surplus money to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. Last year's city council made it such a priority that they committed the first of the surplus to this fund, and we ask you to honor that legacy. For over ten years, the CAF has been the number-one tool for creating affordable housing all along the spectrum of needs in our community. We've heard many stories of need in our IMPACT congregations, like one from a lady who sold her home so she could downsize and find an accessible and affordable apartment. She found one. It was handicapped accessible. She liked it and she was quickly asked to leave because the landlord wanted to sell. There's no options now that are accessible and affordable for her. Last year, the CAF was at the lowest level ever after record investments in public housing renovation. That spending is very important and we still need the CAF. We can avoid these situations of the CAF running out of money by having dedicated funding sources, and we urge you to have your staff look into that. This is the first chance of this city council to support affordable housing as a priority. I ask the people in the audience to please stand if you agree that the CAF should get at least seven hundred thousand dollars of surplus funding. Thank you. Also, we would like to let everyone here know that our big annual meeting, it's actually the biggest meeting in central Virginia that discusses community problems, our Nehemiah Action, will be March 31st from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Martin Luther King Jr. Performing Arts Center, and you will all receive invitations this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robin Hoffman?
Hi, everybody. I'm Robin Hoffman. I live in the city. I'm here today, I didn't want to come here today, but I'm here today, I'm compelled to come here today to talk about yesterday's peaceful demonstration. I don't think it was peaceful and I'm here to say that Charlottesville should somehow step up and tell the real story about how we are enabling people to come in with assault rifles, which are weapons of mass destruction. I don't see that that's peaceful. I also don't believe the news media is calling it that and also BBC is the only one that the British television interviewed them personally with their assault rifles and looked at them. And they are talking about it having something to do with Charlottesville, so that's why I'm here today. I feel like Charlottesville needs to tell the real story. How we, not we, but we kind of were surprised that these people were enabled by one person, Jason Kessler, over a period of six months to come here in droves. How somebody can carry an assault rifle that kills millions of people in minutes? First of all, if I was in the military, I guess I could be licensed to carry a military assault rifle. If I was a nurse and somebody gave me a scalpel, scalpel and said, "Go do surgery," which I am a nurse and if somebody gave me a scalpel, I wouldn't legally be trained to do it, so I wouldn't use it. It's the same with the military assault. What, how do we, anywhere in this country, give permission to enable somebody to use a military-grade weapon and carry it across state border in their car at the traffic lights? You know, in the street? What is going on? But certainly, we need to tell our legislation as Charlottesville, I think, as a committee or something, that this happens because we enable these people. And we don't do it because we want to, but because it happened that way. From February until August 12th, they came in insidiously saying, putting their foot in the water and then finally saying, "Oh, nobody's doing anything, so, okay, let's come because it's freedom of speech." It's not freedom of speech. It's called abuse. It's called threats. It's called anything else, but it's not peaceful. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Cruz?
Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Cruz, the Executive Director of the Charlottesville Climate Collaborative, and I'm also a Charlottesville City resident for the past twenty years. I want to thank you for adding the "we are still in" letter to your agenda this evening on very short notice. I appreciate the urgency that the council is demonstrating around climate action. When the Trump administration pulled out of the Paris Climate Agreement, there was an extraordinary reaction. Universities, businesses, and cities like Charlottesville all began making their own commitments to stay in the Paris Climate Accords, which were the "we are still in" coalition. Over three thousand entities have signed on to this coalition and have begun making their own bold commitments to climate action. In Virginia, and communities in particular, are particularly poised to act swiftly and ambitiously on climate. Virginia's population, eighty-eight percent of our population resides in urban and suburban communities. That gives us a tremendous ability as communities, as cities, to lead on climate action. Right now, the General Assembly, the Virginia General Assembly, is considering a number of proposals that could help advance Charlottesville's own climate action goals. Charlottesville, Albemarle, Blacksburg, Richmond, Arlington, Alexandria, and Roanoke have all set leadership targets for climate action, and there is now an opportunity for all these communities to band their voices together, to demand the adoption of state-level policies that will help you achieve your targets. This week, we submitted the "we are still in" coalition to the General Assembly, to you, we being the Charlottesville Climate Collaborative, for state-level action to adopt policies that would increase our city's resources for energy efficiency programs, for public transportation, and to remove barriers to renewable energy in our community. I encourage city council to sign on to the "we are still in" letter, and I hope this coalition of municipalities can be a trend where we see opportunities of communities really proving their, their power and their voices by demanding the policies that will help us avoid the most catastrophic impacts of climate change. Thank you again for adding this to your agenda this evening. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me personally or to the Charlottesville Climate Collaborative if we can be of any assistance in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosia Parker?
Good afternoon. I just wanted to ask a question about, well, one, I wanted to clear up one thing about the, for clarity and transparency to the community. You said the last city council meeting that you-
Me?
Yes, me. That you had told me that it was in a black, that the cameras were in a black neighborhood. I don't recall you telling me that it was in a black neighborhood and as I look back, I was never told that because Mr. Richardson was supposed to have answered that, that following city council meeting. So that's the only thing that I kind of wanted to, you know, for clarity and transparency-
So I said, "Open" at the meeting. And then I gave locations the last meeting.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying, but you had said that the last meeting we just had, that before that one, that you had told me it was in a black neighborhood.
I did say that publicly.
I didn't, that's what I'm saying. I didn't hear that, so I just wanted to have a, you know, for transparency to the community that I didn't have understanding when you said that you told me that. And when I look back, I didn't see where you had said that to me. So, but why were the cameras taken down out of the community?
I didn't know they were down.
Yeah, they're down.
Okay.
I would have to go with Chief Brackney on that.
So they, so they're all down now, so it's very confusing that they went up unannounced without the community knowing. Then when I bring it up, and I feel that, that's a hard, that's disheartening to the, well, I'm not going to say all of the community, but I would feel, for me, why would you just take the cameras down after we were talking about it and still, instead of not really explaining why? I mean, you say why they were in these communities, but it's still really not a good explanation to the community. And then they're just up and disappeared. So would they, would they be mobilizing around the community?
I'll let you finish and then I'll-
I'm finished.
Okay. So, I guess one thing that probably needs to be the starting point is, I didn't know the cameras were down, but I think based on the amount of critique that the city and the chief has received around them is probably why they may have pulled them down. And so, it would be, you know, the, whatever the consistent message is that the community wants to hear. I got an email and still have to follow up after trying once with someone over in the Prospect Neighborhood who called, who sent the Facebook message requesting, you know, cameras. And what we were told is that this was in response to the trends, calls coming from internally. I'm not sure, we haven't given a full report and I'm not staff. But I think from the community end is, you know, however we get the information from a broader community about what the needs are, I've said in meetings and I have said here, cameras are not, that surveillance system is not something I would necessarily support. I've said that consistently. There are other counselors who've said they would support it. If we did put them up, I would want us to notify that they were there. If they are being used as a deterrent, then, you know, but if other people don't feel that way. But I also think that we aren't consistent in, you know, what we may be requesting as a community from staff. But that's a response that I guess we'll have at the next meeting that I can't answer, but I, I understand the concern. I have, but I also understand based on the limited information that I have, why they have been motivated to put them up. And again, like, there were incidents over, I think, two weekends ago and there was a community member from the Prospect Area where one of the cameras were originally located who was calling about why they weren't up and oper, you know, well, emailing about why they weren't up and operating.
All right. But, I mean, it would just be nice if, I mean, it's not saying that we are criminals, Mason Pickett, because we aren't all criminals, but it would just be nice if, you know, like you say, if we had like a town hall meeting, you know, or something that the community could be able to have the say, you know, as to why they would want cameras up, which, you know, for security, which I do understand it, because if I knew the cameras up and why they were up and the particular reason, I wouldn't have no problem with the cameras being up. But not being told and then now all of a sudden they're just down, that makes me more iffy, you know, as to what's really going on.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have the question for the next.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Tanisha Huxton?
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things to discuss. First and foremost, the camera issue. I don't really think it's about the cameras. I think it's more so like due process and with Mr. Blair being the city attorney, you should know this better than every, everyone in this room. Due process means that the, the public should have been made aware of the why and the how that they were there. So it's one thing to say, "We're going to put the cameras in this community and this is why and this is how they're going to be monitored and this is the reason behind it." I think the, the due process part is missing in there, and y'all know, I know that very well from my arguments with the police department. Also, if we were on, the police having body cameras on an operative all the time, the same way that we're on, putting cameras up in neighborhoods, then we would see the fairness in, you know, the, the police department being transparent, because there's been several complaints where the police body cameras are not on, they're not turned on, and then you guys aren't telling the public what's happening with the police officers when they're violating body cam policies. You know, I, I know I have two complaints right now outstanding, and neither of them were wearing body cameras. And I don't know what happened to them as far as that, them violating that policy. Another thing is that if council is for cameras being put in certain neighborhoods, then you should be for open CRB interviews, because people should see who's going on the CRB and to see where they stand, if they're for restored justice, if they're for over prosecuting people, if they're not for over prosecuting people or not. We deserve a right to know that stuff. So these are issues that we have been fighting for, for a very long time. And it's a lot of new people up here. Snook Noo too, he's a lawyer, didn't want to leave his law skills out, but you know how this work with the cameras being in certain neighborhoods. You know how I work in court, far as getting somebody to plea out. We, we trying to avoid that type of stuff, you know? So, we don't want those type of situationships happening in Charlottesville anymore. We want to be a better city, hopefully. What else did I want to talk about? What else did I want to talk about? Oh, I'll see y'all to meet you next week. Yeah, I won't bring that out publicly, but that's all I have. And if you haven't seen my film, you should come to the next screen, and not this one, it's sold out, but I'll keep y'all all in line for the next one.
All right. Elliot Harding. Thank you.
Elliot Harding, Elizabeth Avenue. I originally came here this evening to talk about one subject, but a few other speakers brought up some other things I want to address. So I'm going to speak to the thing I came here this evening. It was around three years ago at this time, I came and presented before a different council, and, and it was a different time back in 20, what was that, 17, when monuments and statutes were a different debate at that time. And, and they might have been the same debate, but the point is, is things have changed over time in Charlottesville. Last month, in Richmond, the capital of Virginia, they put up Rumors of War by Kiyan De Wiley, and it came to public notice that Kiyan De Wiley is open to, or is going to do a commission of two other monuments, and he doesn't know where they're going to be. And I, I would ask that this council considers reaching out and having a public request that he would consider coming to Charlottesville with that next one. And if he's not going to put it here in Charlottesville, I would ask the city and the various council committees and commissions to think about at least asking for his guidance, being maybe an artisan residence to help consider revamping and mobilizing. Because there's much development, commercial or residential that might be happening in the city over this council's tenure or the next council's tenure. I think that there should be a cultural component, too, that should be new and invigorating, and I think that given the history that's come out of this city, both, you know, over the past three to four centuries, or the history that's come out of the last three to four years, I think it's, I think that we should really reach out there. But I want to say that the Fourth Amendment and the idea of saying that if you don't have anything to hide, then you should have a camera showing on your back porch or your front porch is despicable. And as far as the idea of due process, Tanisha's exactly right, but it's really equal protection, okay? Because when that camera's facing inwards, it also needs to be facing outwards, and it really shouldn't be pulled, that, I, I have to deal with it right now, and Tanisha mentioned a point about police and body cams. When there are cases where 17 of police officers are on a scene and 16 body cams are on, but one isn't, and that's the one who brought the case? How about you shut off all the cameras until the police get their cameras right first? Okay? That's what I would say. I'll also note that that has something to do with the Second Amendment, because when we're talking about weapons of war, what we're talking assault, right, we're talking about semi-automatic rifles. So the anniversary of August 2017, when 700 police officers are sent here by the governor to do a same state of emergency on the downtown mall, same rifles, who are they protecting? Why don't you disarm them first, and then you can talk about my guns, I haven't hurt anybody. Okay? So what I would ask is not only that the city revamp the camera policy, but make sure there's protecting the same people that you're trying to police. Thank you.
All right. And we have a few more spots, is there anyone who would like to speak?
Hello, councilors, my name's Harold Foley. I'm a organizer for the Legal Aid Justice Center. I'm coming here today to bring something to your attention. The initial CRB created these bylaws that would look at policy change in the police department, and all I've been hearing tonight is about policy change, and the council don't know about policy change. And if they knew about policy change, they didn't hear about the policy change. It's really ironic, the initial CRB bylaws had a session in there to look at policy change, to make recommendations about policy change, and the previous counselor kind of threw that in trash, kind of watered it down. Right now, the Police Review Board doesn't have the opportunity to look at policy change. And that's really scary, because some of your councils up here, they even know the cameras is up here at once, and didn't even know it's down. So, I hope that this is like an eye-opener for councilor, and to see how this can change. Maybe you can go back and look at the original bylaws and see if we can implement some of the things that's been taken out of those bylaws to make it stronger. And I hope that this is, is an eye-opener for you, because this is not only the policies about the cameras and the hoods, but it's also something to camera policies on the officers, it's not being consistent. Thank you.
And in terms of the original bylaws, we had the discussion about the CRB, the new members once appointed, with the executive director being able to look at what was passed. Did we have that?
Yes.
Discussion, okay.
At the end, I'll be happy to-
Okay.
-go over what those actions.
So, and I think that's the goal, which we'll have the discussion about funding, but to get the individuals seated and, and making sure that the membership criterias are covered, so, and then at that point, the board assisting with the hiring of the ED is the goal.
So, I forgot to ask, is the Haven and Potch, isn't that a social organization?
So... I wouldn't say so, but, but I think y'all are getting worked up about things that you all don't have to get worked up about, because I think what we were trying to say, and I gave an example of having someone which we always thought would be maybe like a legal aide on there, instead of individuals who have applied being- So what we have talked about in the initial, that we'll open it up, and then we will have the discussion about whether the membership needs, how we modify that, and if that discussion leads us to moving one of those numbers over into the other category, then that's what we'll do, or if something counts, we will expand. We just had this discussion, started having discussion earlier. Did you have any?
Couple of points to Mr. Foley's concerns. First would be the criteria for the organization. The ordinance states represents an organization that seeks racial or social justice on behalf of historically disadvantaged communities. I think that's ultimately the council would, would make that call, if they fall within that criteria or not. As to the policy recommendation, there was a resolution passed on November the 4th, but the ordinance itself does state that before there are any changes in the policies named in that November 4th, 2019 resolution, CRB has to be provided then before they're enacted. And it also states the CRB can independently make any policy recommendations that it wishes to change the police policies. That's, that's in the ordinance. Now, it's different from the initial one, but there is, there is a policy component to the current CRB ordinance.
That's all I'm saying, it's different.
Sure.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. So we're going to close Community Matters, and we have time to continue. So next, we'll have the year-end appropriations, first of two readings.
Madam Mayor, if I may, on one item that came up during Community Matters, I believe the police department does, on certain occasions, if a law enforcement officer dies in Virginia, put the flag at half mast, but we'll follow up on that. That may be what the discrepancy, that the comment or pointed out.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Chris Cullen, and I'm the city's Director of Finance. This agenda item is a report on the fiscal year 2019 year-end adjustments and first reading of the appropriating the general fund unallocated surplus for FY19. I'm also joined by Chrissy Hamel and Ryan Davidson from the Budget Office. This effort is a collaboration between the Finance Department and the Budget Office. I'd like to publicly thank them for their assistance in that, and they will also be here to answer any questions you might have as we get into this item. As just a little bit of background, city manager prepares and city council adopts a balanced budget each fiscal year, in other words, revenues equals expenditures. But the budget is just a projection, the actual results of a budget aren't known until 15 months later. So, for example, the budget that you're going to adopt this April, we won't know what the actual results are until June of the following year, when that fiscal year closes. Whether the city generates a surplus or a deficit isn't known until the audit is completed every year and the, the year-end results are known. To the extent that surpluses are based on ongoing identifiable trends, we make adjustments in the budget every year to account for those. Surpluses can also occur from one-time events, either unforeseen revenues or unforeseen reductions in expenditures. And as such, we treat surpluses as one-time events, and they should only be used for one-time expenditures, and the idea there is that we want to avoid creating a structural imbalance in the city's budget by using one-time money to fund, fund the ongoing needs. Simply put, even though the trend has been that the city generates an annual surplus, we don't plan on it to, to occur, and as such, we treat them as one-time events. For the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, fiscal year 2019, the general fund ended with a positive unallocated surplus of approximately $5.8 million, or 3.2 percent within the adopted budget. This trend is consistent with past fiscal years in terms of percentage within the adopted budget. The average over the last five fiscal years is about, been about 3.4 percent. FY19 was within 3.2 percent. Actual the budget performance of plus or minus 5 percent is considered to be within best financial management practices. And also FY19, the trend was similar in that surpluses are typically generated by revenues performing better than we thought, and city departments not spending their entire budget amounts. And again, that trend is very similar to what we've seen in the past. On the revenue side, the, the revenues that perform especially well are local revenues, the real estate tax, personal, professional license, the B-Pole tax, personal property, the transient occupancy tax, or the lodging tax, meals tax. On the expenditure side, the single biggest item the city budgets for every year is personnel and associated personnel cost, benefits and such. So departments that have vacancies, or that simply have vacancies, often produce budget savings as well. And so what you see on the screen here before you, this is Exhibit 1 in the agenda packet. This attached resolution includes staff's recommendations for uses of the $5.8 million surplus. As I mentioned, this is Exhibit 1 in your, in your packets, and I wanted to put it up here, it might be a little bit easier for folks here in the audience and at home to, to follow along. And I'm going to go through each of these, a little bit of detail, not too much, and describe each of these, and certainly if you have any questions, we can address those following the presentation. So again, we saw at the top there, the unallocated fund balance of approximately $5.8 million. Item number one is a compensation study. This was an item discussed during last spring's budget discussions with staff and council. This will provide funds to do a comprehensive holistic analysis of the city's compensation system. It's been a number of years since the city has conducted such a study, and this is more than just the market studies that we typically have done in recent years. As I mentioned, this is a much more holistic look at how we do compensation, what our compensation philosophy is, how it fits into the city's overall vision, as well as addressing issues of compression, salary inequality, those sorts of things as well. Item number two, startup costs for the CRB of $50,000. These would provide sufficient funds to get it up and running through June 30th of this year, and then the budget that you will be considering here in the spring would then pick up those costs going forward. This provides some startup costs for staffing and any other needs there might be between now and June 30th. Item three, this is to replenish the citywide reserve for radio replacements. This is part of the regional 800 megahertz radio system used through our emergency communications center. These are radios for police, fire, sheriff, public works, utilities, pupil transportation. These are expenditures which we are in the process of making, and these ones would go back into the citywide reserve to replenish the source of where those, those monies came from. Item number four is also for the citywide reserve. This is $400,000 as a reserve for legislative changes. As we're all aware, the General Assembly will be considering a number of bills which could impact our community. This is to create a reserve for funds to address whatever, whatever those may be, whatever financial resources might be needed to address the community or council's desires stemming from that legislation. Item number five, Communications Department requested $3,500 to be a part of the 2020 census, a 2020 census count project with the Planning District Commission to count folks in communities which are, have traditionally been undercounted. Item number six, $15,000 for Unity Days funding for the upcoming August, and this would also get, put funds in place to address any costs they may have between now and June 30th, and then the new budget would pick up any funds going forward after July 1st. Item number seven is a collaboration with the county to update our geographic information system, the pictometry images that are used by a number of city departments, such as the Assessors Office, NDS, and again, this is an opportunity to partner with the county on this effort, and this is actually a two-year commitment of $29,000. Item number eight, is a request from the police department for $96,000 for a variety of one-time sorts of expenses, including a reserve for some of their facility repairs which they're undertaking, some ongoing costs associated with the impounding of a vehicle from August 2017, police psychologist contract, and some equipment for the forensics unit that was, as well as some computer monitors replacement as well. Item number nine, the finance department, this is to purchase software to automate the processing of accounts payable. The city processes tens of thousands of accounts payables transactions each year, much of it done by paper and done manually. This would produce efficiency gains across the organization, as well as reduce the amount of paper that we generate. Item number 10, this was also an item that was discussed during last spring's budget considerations. This is a transfer to the retirement fund of $1.8 million to fully fund the retirement liability associated with a 2020 cost of living adjustment. Typically, every year, we budget about 2 percent in terms of retirement contribution for the cost of living adjustment. The cost of living adjustment on July 1st was 4.17 percent. The, these funds represent that difference to make the retirement fund whole, and by doing this allocation now, it allows us to take advantage of the time value of money and compounding to make up that difference over time. And then finally, number 11, transfer of $700,000 to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, or CAF. And so when you total items 1 through 11 up, that brings you to just a little bit over $5.2 million, leaving $625,000 left over, which would then transfer to the CIP, a contingency account per city policy, for future capital needs. Tonight is the first reading of two. Your February 3rd meeting, you will also have a public hearing on this appropriation, as well as the second reading. That concludes my presentation. Staff is here to address any questions you might have. Thank you.
So are there any clarifying questions?
So are there any clarifying questions?
Mr. Cullen, I just know we had talked about this in a prior meeting, but the funds for the radio replacement, some of those have already been expended. Can you just kind of go over just the flow of those funds?
Actually, I might invite Ms. Hamel up to the microphone to provide some of those details.
Good evening.
Hello. So we are in the process of paying for those. POs have been issued for the radios. They're in the process of being set up. So checks have not actually gone out yet, but will be very soon, within the next month or so.
Those are coming from the reserve to pay for those and then this is to replenish that. So what is our typical policy for how much we would like to have in that reserve?
So typically, we have included normally between $250,000 to $300,000 as part of the budget. There happens to be a larger balance in there right now because we allocated $1 million for the August 12th expenses. And so not all of that was allocated or spent. So the reserve had a larger balance which could absorb the radios right now. And doing the radio purchase now and using the reserve funds actually lets us save over half a million dollars had we waited.
Waited, okay.
Any other question?
Just have a clarifying question on that then. If our reserve fund is usually $250,000 to $300,000, but we're putting $600,000 in it, that's two times what we normally have in there.
So we were restoring a balance because I believe with the 18-year end, we allocated $1 million to give us money to be able to address any expenses that came up with the August 12th events. And so not all of that was allocated. We also have, don't know what it's going to look like at the end of '20 in terms of what was already expended with the past August 12th. So there was a higher balance than normal because of that reserve that was set aside.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one point of clarification. On the resolution, it says for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018. Should that be changed? Just confirm to 2019 for the second reading?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to...
So I have some thoughts. I sent an email to council and staff earlier. Just the past two years, how this process has worked before is that we've been able to kind of throw out some suggestions of how the funding is used. So I sent that in an email earlier today. And we have all met with staff, either with our 2-2-ones. And so I just, will probably just read my email. So I understand and support the allocation, the transfer to the retirement fund. The compensation study, I understand. I know that it's something that we need. It was helpful to hear from staff that when they had discussed the potential of the study with companies that do the work, that this is probably the dollar amount that would be used for the study. But I would like for us to receive a timeline on that.
Well, I can answer that one right now. We wouldn't have a concrete timeline until we actually hired a consultant that would be able to tell us exactly what the timeframe would be to implement the entire process.
But even just knowing when, like the RFP will go out and what that process will look like, when this money will be spent would be helpful. Number 3 with the CRB, so I have one first apology to make. I did think and I told Mr. Foley this because I thought this was already, you know, being handled. And then, so this request is here and I meant to say that because we did have this discussion right after that meeting when I said that to you. So my apologies for that. I thought something was happening that had not occurred yet. But again, this is, I would like for our staff to present a timeline to us. And, you know, I would hope that once we get the board seated, that we can start the search with the board for the Executive Director position. For 4, I don't support replenishing the reserves at that amount. And in just a second, I would tell you why. But putting in what is normally there, or $250,000 back in it, is something that I do support. The Communication Department request, I support. The GIS update, support. Understanding that it would be, that it's cheaper for us to do it alongside the county. Number 7, I had questions about just the timeline of replacement for equipment and where that fit on the original CIP list. Had that question, but would support it. I support the $400,000. But if for some reason we didn't use the money, I would want us to be able to have that discussion about what else we could do with the funding. And number 9, very convincing. I understand. I hear it all the time. So making the Finance Department system more efficient, 100% support that. My suggestion for the CAF funding, and we have some other news that we'll be able to share, I think relatively soon, but was to put $500,000 there to start building a reserve fund for future housing needs with the other $200,000 and take the CIP contingency fund down to $500,000. And I also had questions about what, are there items currently listed that this money would be spent on immediately? Or is it just going into it as kind of reserve until? The next, with the $200,000 in reserve for the CAF funding, I, again, I posted a message on Facebook because I was getting a lot of questions about whether support. And I always support housing, but I do want us to make sure that we're doing it in the most efficient process and the way that we can, that we're using taxpayers' funding to hopefully kind of heal this affordable housing crisis that we have. And to do that, we need to be able to measure outcomes for that. My second suggestion was that, one thing, when I first saw this, the staff recommendation, there are things like the retirement fund, the compensation study, CRB, I know that will, the efficiency that will make the lives of our staff members a lot better long-term. But I would like for us to consider supporting the employees now. I know that the compensation study is what we are hoping to start talking about increasing salaries. But our, the work that our former Deputy City Manager, Mike Murphy, did during his interim period, along with some of the other compensation studies, already let us know that we have a major crisis with salaries, that they are our lowest wage earners, that it's based on race and gender. And I think we have enough information for staff to come back with us with a presentation of how we can impact some of our full-time employees who earn $50,000 and under. So I would like for us to consider putting $350,000 into potentially increasing their salaries now. I know it's not a one-time expense, but I've asked in the meetings that, you know, we consistently have the surplus. And I understand we may not have it, but, did you have something to say? Okay. But I just think it's important for us to start supporting them and not asking them to wait. I have $58,766 to the Equity Fund. And if you all have read the Orange Dot Studies, one of the things that it discussed is poverty in our area and the crises that families have and they are unable to afford, you know, just everyday stuff that a lot of people are able to afford and how once that hits, that causes a spiral in their lives. So the last $80,000 of that, I would like for us to consider supporting that program, which I think is budgeted. It's a program Human Services runs at about $80,000, $85,000 already. So again, I'm just 1 of 5, which is pointed out frequently. But I do spend a lot of time making sure that people are always put at the top of the list. And these are just some of my thoughts. And it will take 3 of 5 votes minimum for any of this to happen and I'm very aware of that. Thank you.
I guess a question I had, just having not been on council at the time, is just more background of sort of the genesis of the compensation study and what that conversation was that brought it out as something that needed to be done. And in broad terms, is there some, what's sort of the goal of when that compensation study is finished, the policy changes or investments that are made after that study is completed?
Chris, you want to talk about the history and then...
So I think part of the compensation study came up last year as part of the discussion when we talked about increasing the living wage from the 1440 to the 15. And we talked about the compression issues and how to address those. And we talked about when we were doing a merit increase versus a performance increase and how to divvy all that up. And I think one of the things we talked about was that we didn't have a systematic or format, a way to do that that made a lot of sense. Also, I think from a historical purpose, and I don't want to speak, this is not my expertise, but a lot of our, just our pay scales and a lot of things are outdated and need to be updated. And so I think all of that, as a combination of the budget discussion, we came up with the plan that we were going to move for with the compensation study. At that time, I think we were late in the budget process, so it wasn't something we could get done. But we agreed that we would look at that as part of the year-end process because that was a source of funding to do that. I don't know if anybody wants to add.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
No, I agree and that was certainly a priority that we had going into that whole budget cycle. We weren't in a position to allocate the funding for at that time.
Do I understand that we have not had such a study done in like 20-plus years?
That's my understanding as well.
So we've got, we've got some salaries and wages that are so far out of whack, we don't even know how far out of whack they are.
Correct.
And that's why I have pause around allocating one-time dollars to doing anything with salaries because I feel like we've gotten ourselves in a little bit multiple times in this last year, including with the schools. Obviously, we have set the stake in the ground and I supported that around the quest staffing that came along. But then that means that now we're going to have to make sure that we have dollars in an ongoing budget cycle. And so every time that we make one-time allocations with dollars that are operational, it makes the next budget cycle all the more challenging. And so I just want us to be, I really want to focus on things that are truly one-time allocations.
Well, I think, again, for me, if, and I shared this with the team when we met, but if we were talking about the fact that historically this wasn't the fact, right? I under, that's not even the major feedback that we got in terms of why not to do raises. It was just to make sure that along with the compensation, that we wait for the compensation study. So there could be a more strategic approach. There would be maybe three-tier approach. And so my question there was, you're going to have to start with a tier. They would be able to take the new salaries of the individuals. And I don't know how many individuals that could possibly be or what that would look like because I didn't get feedback. But you would build that into the budget versus, and so for the employees that are the lowest wage earners in the city, for them to have to wait another, because they are not going to be included in this budget cycle. So you're talking about, that we're working on now, or you're talking about potentially the next budget cycle, the impact that this could have on their lives is more significant than us attempting to figure out a process that we are most comfortable with when we know that the problem is there. I'm not saying to let me or anyone up here besides staff members that are up here to select how this is done. I'm just asking for us to be a little creative in how something like this would work. And I would get the one-time funding argument if we were not having this discussion every year. Another thing that I would like to share in terms of the emergency fund, some of the data from our work. So between August 2019 to November 2019, 325 callers from Charlottesville requested $182,349 in financial assistance, of which Human Services was only able to provide $25,000. Of the 325 individuals, 238 requested assistance relating to housing. They ranged from assistance with deposit to rent. There were assistance with mortgage. The average for mortgage ranged from $520 to $5,250. So that range would tell you that, you know, some of our apparently upper-end family members are struggling for whatever reason. Needed assistance with locating places to live. And then the next item was with utility bills. So other 325 people, 60% with utility bills. And then there's car repairs. There were 17% were homeless, were few or any resources. And so, I mean, I have a long list here. But I think if you've read the Orange Dot reports, then you understand Rich Skyla work and what it says about the importance of that funding also. So again, I know that we'll have a public hearing and another meeting. But I think that while I understand how replenishing equipment or purchasing equipment and radios and, you know, all of that stuff will be beneficial. If I knew what the CIP reserves were going to be used for, I might have had a different, you know, discussion here. But I think there's always value in making sure that you are being citizen-focused since we're talking about, you know, taxpayers' dollars. And if we're talking about even the discussions around affordable housing, if we don't put a dent into the things that cause people to spiral out of control and then back to our employees, if we are not able to figure out a way to be more proactive for people who've been waiting, some of them decades, to be compensated adequately, that, you know, we are still, we are just further away from the goal.
So the $700,000 for CAF, I mean, I'll be frank, like I just feel like I made that commitment last budget cycle and I want to stick to that commitment. You're saying that we would pull some of it out to have as a reserve? Are you saying that we could use that for some of these human services needs that are focused on housing? I'm just trying to understand.
So what I sent was putting 5, and I, I mean, this is hard without, because we had a discussion about whether you make that announcement or whatever.
That has already been said publicly, so I'm not, we can talk about that.
Yeah, but I think with both of those...
Don't cross things too.
Yes. Being in there, that that's a significant amount that it wasn't expecting. What I think along with the, while we're talking about reserves, because that, since there were a lot of reserve comments here, that we, we know that housing is a big issue. If that money is needed now, then we put all, I said it in my email, then we put all $700,000. But I also think that we need to, you know, start building a fund so that if people come to us for an emerg- people come to us for an emergency, if it's something that's not needed now, if the, if the community is saying, and especially the individuals who work for those organizations are saying, no, these are things that we intend to apply for immediately, and we get applications for all the funding in there, I support it.
And ultimately, those will come back to us to approve anyway, the allocations.
Yep.
I just wanted a clarification. What's the difference between the two hundred thousand dollar strategic, the emergency fund, and the eighty thousand dollar Human Services Program crisis funding?
Let me get back to that because I don't know what your, the two hundred thousand dollars for the reserve?
For this reserve fund for future housing needs, what's?
Oh, yeah, we don't have a reserve fund for.
I'm just kind of trying to figure out what that would look like.
To make a CAF balance.
Yeah, so, yeah. My, I was thinking more along the lines of building for the projects. We're going to have to figure out when we're talking about making this investment and like PHA, CRHA, we don't know what unexpected expenses may come up, you know, in the future. And I just think if we start building, especially for those two organizations with the amount of funding, and especially CRHA, that if there are unexpected expenses, that we would start planning for it. But again, if, in my email, I had that I supported the funding for the CAF, as I stated last week, and I just really wanted to get us to thinking about the fact that we will probably have a lot of emergencies coming up with these multimillion-dollar, you know, developments.
Dr. Richardson, what is staff's perspective on how we kind of get at this compensation piece ahead of a study? Like, what are some of the shorter-term things? Does your team have?
I don't think you have any shorter term. I think you've used all your short-term options by doing piecemeal market studies over the year. And from that, you know, you lag in the salaries, then people be in position to write titles and things like that. And then, we have other departments that need step programs to be able to identify where their salaries are going to be, you know, at a certain period of time, which will help with our, you know, I'll say our retention rates in terms of keeping people here in various positions. But, you know, we see it all the time. I mean, we hire good people to work in certain capacities, and then, you know, a surrounding county will hire them away because their salaries are much higher than ours here. So, as was mentioned previously, you know, having that amount of time in between doing a true comp study, you know, you, you're, I mean, you've got a lot of work to do in between, you know, even putting titles in, step pay, and different things like that to make up for all the years that, you know, people haven't been paid within a certain percentage of the market. So, what this does with the one point two, that really gets us to look at the entire city with all the positions and how we move forward instead of, as I mentioned a couple minutes ago, was piecemealing the compensation across the city.
Can I ask, I'm curious about the Mayor Walker's suggestion, two hundred thousand dollar reserve fund for future housing needs. That sounds a little like almost, you know, what you were campaigning about, talking about a strike fund. Is that the kind of thing you're thinking about, Mayor Walker?
That was like a land strike fund where we had money aside that we could purchase, purchase land once it came up.
Well, I mean, we could use that. I mean, that's something that, Dr. Richardson, we've discussed that too.
Yeah, we talked about that. But also too, I know we talked about the land bank piece of it too, but I thought that that was going to wait until we got a housing strategy completed through the comp plan to be able to start that. But, you know, it is, you know, a good thing to have some cash really available to do things such as, you know, if we need to purchase land or different things like that in the community.
I remember last year, I guess last spring, there were some apartments on Monticello Road, I think it was.
Bainbridge Apartments.
About, gee, can't the city go, go buy them up? Of course, a number of issues there, only one of which was landlord would have wanted to sell, would have had to want to sell. But we didn't have any money to do it anyway. And I think that was sort of the thing that Ms. Gill was talking about during the campaign, was having that kind of fund available. This would seem to be at least the start of a fund like that.
I mean, my understanding is that the CAF could function in that way though already in terms of when unanticipated opportunities come up, you could use it. Is the goal here to earmark it additionally beyond the CAF and saying like, only make this, you know, this money can only be used for expenditures of this particular type of like housing opportunity, whether it be like purchasing land or, I'm just not entirely sure how it varies from being in the CAF.
Traditionally, the CAF has been used to go through the application process for allocations by the HAC subcommittee.
For a hundred percent of the dollars.
A hundred percent. And we don't, it doesn't have to necessarily be that way. There's always more requests for dollars than there are dollars to be allocated. So, I mean, my last couple of years of doing that. But I think it's up to our discretion. Certainly, we get the last say in any allocations from, from the CAFs.
And there, the CAF is just making a recommendation or?
Correct. So, they're, and right now, they're going to be, because of this, as well as because the funding is going to be freed up from the crossings too, because that's likely going to happen next year, those dollars, then they're going to have another application process. So, anyone new that's come up in the last six months can apply. Anyone who's applied before but didn't get the first round of allocation can reapply with the same application, and that will be, you know, made public.
And so, that two hundred thousand would just be, I guess, sort of earmarked outside of the HAC process?
If we said that we're not going to allocate all a hundred percent, or they could recommend doing that, and we would say, no, we want to hold twenty, whatever dollars amount. I think it depends on the projects for me personally. Like, I want to see what the projects are before I would.
Right.
Because if there are things that are ready to go right now, I would want us to be investing in them.
I have a couple of other questions that are spurred by some of your suggestions, Mayor Walker. When you talk about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to increase salaries for folks, full-time people making under fifty thousand dollars, do we know how many people, how many city employees that is?
We could find that out. We don't like to have it on hand.
I mean, I, I'll be honest with you. I, I have the broader concern about trying to address salary issues and compensation issues through this fund, but it, or through this surplus. But it just strikes me that there, you know, how many people are, what is the gap between getting them all to, say, fifty thousand dollars and what they're getting paid now? I mean, those are the sorts of things that if we don't know the answers to those questions, it's hard even to figure out how to assess them come budget time, much less right now.
So, when the discussion started happening around the living wage, part of the resistance of doing the, raising the salary, raising the, getting to a living wage from the ten dollars and ninety-five cent per hour was the compression issue.
Right.
So, that conversation, and Mr. Jones was here, you know, at the time when I had a lot of those conversations, they discussed what that would do not only to other employees who were temporary, but with also staff members. And some of the discussion over the years also, there has been discussion about who has qualified for increases, who has been able to get, you know, higher-paying positions within the city. And there has been a, and I did not have time to find all of this data, but anyone in the city, there are a few people in here, can correct me if I'm wrong, that there was clear, clear discriminatory, you know, behavior in the process of who was selected. And if my memory serves me correctly, based on race and gender, so black women tended to be the individuals who received the least increases and were not offered the ability to move up within the organization first. But it was across the board. So, some of the equity work that the interim city manager did, it also showed, does anybody have that information? Anybody want to pull it up? So, I won't be trying to pull all these numbers out of my head. But it also showed that, that, you know, that wages, that you could probably look, based on the look, that it was like of a discriminatory nature of who, the inequities among those. And what would have been helpful would have been for someone from the city to be given this presentation, even if that wasn't a recommendation. So, I think from all the conversations that I've had over a lot of years and that information, when compression served us well, and I know we are under a new administration, that conversation, that was the reason to do a stair step. If you remember, like a kind of tier program, tier step with the living wage. So, it went from, I think, ten ninety-five to eleven seventeen to thirteen seventy-nine to fourteen forty to the fifteen dollars. Last year, when I was asking council to be more strategic with the four point one seven allocation so that it wasn't across the board, so that it impacted some of the lowest-wage earners, the full-time, the FTEs in the organization, there wasn't necessarily, I guess, the energy levels by the time the discussion came up with some of the comments. There wasn't, that, at that time, they didn't have the energy to look at that. And first, and it was a very exhausting period, so I acknowledge that with staff. But now, we are saying that that four point one seven across the board has also impacted this wage disparity that we are seeing and is another reason for why we want to make sure that we hold off on doing anything else until the compensation study is done. I understand holistic studies. I am that person. I like more information than less all the time. But I also think, and that was a conversation that I had that just popped in my head years ago, where the department heads, I was told, could look within their departments, and they would be able to make recommendations to the city manager about, and with HR's assistance, about employees within their departments who were underpaid. And I know one of the concerns of Dr. Richardson is that the individuals could potentially be paid more than, and then, when the compensation study comes, that we, but we already know that there are some people, and they're at a higher level than this lower level, that are, you know, paid more than the compensation study would probably.
But I, as we discussed, yeah, I agree with you. But the thing that we discussed was that, you know, if you do that, you further expand the compression throughout the city. And what happened before, as I mentioned, that you were doing market studies in certain areas for certain positions and for certain folks who were considered in favor of certain folks who led departments, or just in general, you know, was able to get the city manager to make those changes. And what I've said is that we're not making any more strategic moves in terms of moving salaries at this point until we have the compensation study. We'll do the annual raises and things like that, but as far as moving the positions, I don't think that would be a good thing at this very moment until we got to the point of doing the compensation study. I, I just, I just don't want, because then you create a bigger gap in terms of equity because you're giving some people a significant raise. But then, you've got other folks who, you know, who have been here for a long time, and then, they don't get a raise at, you know, at other levels. So, what I want to do is make sure that it's fair and equitable across the board.
I had one other question about your suggestions, and this would simply reflect my ignorance of something that's been going on for the last year or two. Although, actually, I went looking through various places on the city website trying to find the answer, and I couldn't. First of all, what is the fund balance in the equity fund right now? Do we know?
You had that, Brian?
Good evening. So, the equity fund was part of the city council strategic initiatives funding, and this was dollars that were specifically set aside at one point as part of, for those purposes. Over the years, we've spent down all of that, the Office of Equity and Inclusion, we use some of those dollars, Food Equity Network. There's a long list of that, and I think in total, the council strategic reserve or strategic initiatives fund is down to approximately sixty-four thousand dollars, I believe it is, at this point. So, that, those, we designated it as an equity fund, but it was all council strategic initiatives, and it could have been, council could have come back and said, yes, we know, we said these were for equity, but we want to use it for this strategic initiative over here, even though it's not specifically equity-related. So, it was kind of a melding, and it kind of confused things when we presented it. So, at this point, we've, based on our records, we basically expended what was left in the equity fund, and now, it's all council strategic initiatives funding there at this point.
Okay, so, that, that may partly answer the second piece of my question, was I was trying to find some document someplace that set out the criteria for the expenditure of funds from the equity fund, and I couldn't find any such document. Is there, is there any description of what we're going to do with that money or simply whatever council decides on the spur of the moment?
Thank you. My understanding of, and recollection of at the time was it would, those equity funds would go through the same lens and the same review that we did with any council strategic initiative funds, memos coming to council, a vote on it, and public discussion on that. But there, I, I would have to go back and look. I'm not sure if there was anything where we specifically said, if it's going to be used for equity, it has to go through these additional steps.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And so, the conversation around doing away with the equity fund, when were we going to have that?
It's not, I don't want to say it's done away with, but it's been spent down. We can show you where those, where those were expended, but we're down to sixty-four thousand dollars total in the, in the council strategic initiatives fund. So, it's not that we said we were doing away with the equity fund, it's just that it's been spent down to the point where it's all could, should be considered as one pot.
Yeah, one of our upcoming budgets, it'd be great just to kind of have a history of that fund.
We can, yeah, we can, I mean, we can easily send out the, the balance and what those, those dollars have been spent on.
Thank you.
Over the years. That's not a problem.
Just to answer your earlier question, in the May sixth, 2019, the information presented to council showed that black females make twelve point two percent less than the average hourly salary, salary rate for all employees in the city.
And I do have one other question. Looking at the memo that we received today, there's an exhibit one, recommended use. We've got some blanks in it, but it's essentially what we've got shown up behind us. The following page has all the same money, plus it's got twenty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars for the police department CIT. And I saw that in an earlier page, kind of unlinked to anything else. What's going on with that?
Correct. While the vast majority of the discussion around the year-end centers on the unallocated portion of the general fund surplus, there's also some housekeeping items that we take care of as well. And in that case, those were funds that were received for that purpose in the last fiscal year. But to continue, but there was no continuing appropriation to have them, to allow them to expend in this fiscal year. So, those funds were received for that specific purpose. And so, but we needed to carry them over into this fiscal year to give them the legal authority to spend that in this fiscal year. And so, there are a handful, and I think there are also a handful of grants as well.
Nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, state fire grant.
What we typically try to do is for funds which we know are going to cross fiscal years, when we bring those to council, we continue, we include a continuing appropriation language. And so, that allows us to, to just automatically do those things as part of the year-end closeout. But there are a few things that we get through the year that we have to include as part of this, as just sort of a housekeeping item.
And then, on the last page, there is an eighty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollar entry for the rescue squad equipment fund, which doesn't appear elsewhere in this document. What's, what's the deal with that?
Chrissy, a little more detail on that, a little more involvement on that.
The, part of the MOU with cars for the billing, there is a contingency fund, and it just was, again, not, because it was the first year of the MOU, we did not include an appropriation language that allowed. an appropriation language that allowed us to put that into the CIP and to use those funds as was in spirit of the MOU. So, again, this is just one of those housekeeping items, and we did correct that with the twenty original budget appropriations, so the contingency funds that are set forth for twenty will automatically go to the CIP account.
I guess I'm just, I'm puzzled by the inclusion of this on the last page, and I can't tell whether this is money we're spending, or money we're getting back, or...
So, the MOU, I mean, the agreement with cars is actually an operating budget within the Fire Department, and so, all of the billing revenue comes to the General Fund. All the expenses related to that come out of the General Fund, but the MOU lays out a portion of that as a contingency, which then goes to the CIP, and cars has to come to the Fire Chief and request to use that money as part for future equipment purchases or things as they need them. So, basically, what's happening on that last page is that's just establishing a budget in the Capital Projects Fund for the contingency monies, so that when they do come make a request, there's a budget there to actually pay that out.
Not actually spending the money yet.
Correct.
Thank you.
I guess another comment is in reading about the budget cycle last year, my understanding is the amount that was pledged to go into the CAF, should a surplus appear, was seven-hundred and fifty thousand dollars rather than seven-hundred thousand. I would be inclined to support, you know, fulfilling that full seven-hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well. I'd also, you know, potentially be open to using that fifty thousand in part to fund some of Mayor Walker's requests with regard to the Equity Fund in the Human Services Program. And I am inclined to, at a minimum, support those requests from Mayor Walker in terms of the Equity Fund in the Human Services Program, especially hearing some of the data about the unmet need in terms of applicants to that.
And seven hundred, I thought, we did the, we ran these numbers last week, I thought it was, did we not have eight hundred in the CAF? We were trying to get to one point five was the commitment that we made.
You're right.
So, that was, seven hundred got us there.
Okay.
That was, I understood, right.
So, my question for the employees, is there any interest in at least hearing from, just asking staff, just if, then, being a little bit more creative with this process of what could possibly happen, even looking at whatever those increases would be, and if that is what the company that does the compensation study is plugging in, and especially with the conversation around the fact that we already know that we're going to create, we have compression issues, and even once we start doing the tier, because you said it would possibly be three tiers, that you're going to have to start with a tier, and that that's going to create compression issues for the other tier until those dollars are allocated. I just don't understand how we could necessarily go wrong. I understand that this may be harder for us or staff to deal with, but in terms of the benefit to the employees, that it would be very helpful for them.
Yeah, I don't disagree, and this is the same discussion we had last budget cycle, because I was as excited as anyone to try to do something sooner versus later, but I think it has to be looked at holistically, and I would certainly be interested in if staff has ideas on things we can do in the interim that we do think is an equitable approach, that doesn't just focus on any one area, because I just, I just fear that then there's, it's just going to cause a ripple effect that could be an issue. I agree with Dr. Richardson's perspective on that.
I, so, can Michelle come up?
Yeah, Michelle.
Good evening. So, I understand, you know, us being hesitant to do this kind of, you know, piecemeal type of, right? What I don't necessarily understand is even when I've asked the questions of like, so what'll happen after we get the compensation study, that it sounds very similar to what we would potentially start now. So, just what are your thoughts?
I think there's, I think there's a good moral imperative behind what we're trying to accomplish in the short term. The downside of that is that there have been short-term fixes implemented over time, and as to what Dr. Richardson had said earlier, it's kind of how we got into this mess. And to be honest with you, you know, off the cuff, I don't have a solution to say, this is what we could do with X number of dollars in the interim without there being more compression. The first thing that comes to my mind is the potential impact on public safety. You're talking about a system that is very much run on maintaining salary equity, you know. Frankly, firefighters and police officers don't like it when people come in within the same year, and they're sitting within five dollars of their, their annual salary. That's a system that is just designed that way, and that's not unique to Charlottesville. You're right.
How long we having, can we try to...
Parks and Rec Two. Like I said, just, public safety is fifty percent of our workforce. I guess that's why they came to mind first. But again, it's not that there aren't solutions there, but I would really be interested in hearing what a consultant could provide for us. But again, that would mean asking someone from the outside to help us before we went to a consultant to ask us for a comprehensive study. So, would that be money we'd be willing to spend for a short-term solution as well? So, it's almost like two projects going on at the same time.
How long would a compensation study take to accomplish?
Several months. It requires meeting with groups of employees. It requires looking at, we would hope, our entire classification system. We have over four hundred and twenty job classifications, which is very large for the number of employees we have.
How many employees do we have?
About a thousand F, about a thousand FTEs, and I would say well over a thousand part-time and seasonal, just kind of a mix there. So, my hope would be that when the consultants leave, we have fewer job titles, a more concise compensation system. And there are a lot of needs that are unique for Charlottesville. I think if we can find the right company to come in, there's an opportunity to do something very creative here.
So, I do get it.
I know you do, I know you do.
But I still have the questions about, you know, just the, the wait time for people who've been waiting a long time, and that with the studies that have been done, the information from department, your expertise, the fact that Dr. Richardson has been doing this work for a very long time, that we should be able to get enough information to figure out, you know, some solution.
Then I would ask, is, I would ask with some guidance on what the priority would be. You had mentioned earlier the inequities as a result of the salary analysis that was looked at by the prior interim city manager. Familiar with that report? You know, would that be the target area, or are you just setting a threshold of people below that certain fifty thousand? It is back to, we have to pick a group, because that money does only go so far.
And that's what I was really interested from, you know, you all. Like, so if we were able to do anything, something, what would that look like? And I think we have like two extremes now, the wait versus the do now, and if we can find some way to where if it's looked at from, how do employees benefit? Because we know that there are just certain people or certain groups in certain departments that haven't been treated fairly, is there a way to look at that? Knowing that we're going to create some of these, I mean, there has been compression, there was compression before even the living wage started, right? And so, that conversation has been ongoing, and hopefully, if this is communicated well to staff, not just this, but the entire compensation study as a whole, that they'll understand that the attempt is to get everyone at some point to where market says that's the ninety-five percent of market they should be. But the starting point will have to be selected, I would hope, based on those who have the greatest need. And there just has to be a communication citywide for employees to understand that you may be in phase two or three, or four, whatever, because we don't know the dollar amount, right? So, we don't know how many phases there will be, but, you know, how is that communicated so that there's an understanding there?
But even in the market studies we've seen, which have been selected titles, there's just been, compared to like what the market says we should be paying, there's, it's been all over the board at a lot of income levels. And some, some of them, we've actually had to address pretty immediately because they were so stark from where we should be. And so, again, I'm just concerned about focusing on any one concentrated area, not recognizing this is an issue citywide.
No, I think there's a lot of pain points in the city, and it's really a matter of picking out which ones suffering the most, and the time that it would take to come back to you with something creative, I'll be honest with you, as time, I could be working on the RFP and vetting consultants to try to keep this moving forward in a reasonable timeline.
I would hope we could do both. I just said I would hope that we would be able to do both.
I'm just wondering what, what the timeline would look like. If we said, yes, we're approving this money at the next meeting, boom, go write an RFP, how long would it take to get the RFP out, to get somebody hired?
We're already working on draft of our, the RFP. We're putting the language together and drafting scope of services, putting a list of vendors together. My understanding for the entire vetting process through procurement could take about four months before we get someone on board to actually begin their work.
Which would be another three or four months after that?
Right.
Okay, so, we're looking at getting some kind of answers perhaps by the fall?
Yes, I think that's reasonable.
If everything goes smoothly. Gotcha. Not in time for the budget?
Not in time for this budget.
This budget.
Preparation for twenty-two.
Gotcha.
Right. And that is a concern, and what I'm hearing from Mayor Walker is what can we do in the meantime? I think it's a very reasonable question. I don't have a solution for you at this time.
Knowing that...
Well, I think, oh, go ahead.
Knowing that there is nothing else that is as good as having a raise, I mean, there just isn't. Have we ever considered something like an employee emergency fund? Where, I know this is kind of a, but that's where if employees come to the city saying they're having car problems and they're, they're stretched, and it's not the same as giving someone a raise, but if there is a fund available for, no, I'm just, it is something to help that if somebody's having an emergency in their life, they have some assistance from us, their employer.
Not that I'm aware of. I've been here ninety days, not that I'm aware of.
I mean, I've never heard of anything, I just wasn't sure if you've ever heard of that someplace else.
We do have the capability of borrowing against our ICMA accounts, I believe, if someone chose to have one, but not all employees, you know, feel that they have that extra money, so to say, to invest in that.
Those are also the employees most likely to be running into an emergency that they can't.
And I'll just also just add from, that there are two employees that worked in the Budget Office when, for a long time, that have worked on some of these, you know, like the compression analysis, and, and maybe if there was actually just some thought given to if this were possible.
We can do that.
What we could...
We could certainly do that. If the money's there, you know, again, what's that greatest pressure, pain point, and explore how would we spend that money? Something I would also ask for you all to consider is throwing that money back into the pot for across-the-board raise, because then it's going to impact everyone, even if it's just a quarter of a percent, or however far that three hundred thousand would go. It's, it's still something.
But that's also the problem we ran into last year, was that the, some people wouldn't necessarily receive raises if this compensation study was in place, or the same amount, because they may already be paid more than their tier or market rate would show that they would be paid.
Were raises withheld from people last year?
No, that's what I'm saying, it was across the board, but the conversation around what would be in more strategic. And I did some research back then, and there were places that have done this, which is, I, you know, trying to find just solutions for what we were, you know, dealing with. So, it's, it's done, I'm not saying it's ideal, I don't know, I'm not human cer, you know, human resources, but I just think that we could maybe be a little bit open to. I know we mentioned, there was mentioned in the meeting about maybe bonuses to certain employees, but again, that's not the same impact as a, you know, increase in pay.
But for this conversation relative to the surplus, I'm not comfortable allocating surplus dollars for salary.
I know.
I'm just, do we, do we have agreement on that?
I agree. I agree with...
Because they're operational.
I agree with Ms. Hill. Could I ask two other questions? What, what is the current balance, if there is one, in a CIP contingency account?
So, right now, there is one point nine million dollars in the CIP contingency fund. However, there are a few different things that have been talked about, potential uses for that funds that have quote-unquote sort of not been earmarked formally, but just sort of set aside. One was for the downtown park planning, and then there were two other items, which I'm trying to recall off the top of my head, which left us at about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, I believe, if those things were, that's correct, if those, those things were pulled out. The other thing just to keep in mind is that the contingency fund is part of our policy, and it is a good financial policy to use the surplus to put to the contingency. So, this year, actually, this would be the smallest amount that's ever gone to the contingency.
The six twenty-four?
Yeah, I shouldn't say ever, but for a long time. Because it does give council the ability to react to things that happen or needs that come up during the year. So, again, the contingency does, is at the full discretion of council, it has to come, anytime those funds are spent, it has to come back to council to be approved. But right now, to answer your specific question, there's one point nine million dollars that is there.
So, if we really wanted to talk about dealing with some sort of a housing strike fund problem, there actually is money available that could be used, assuming it's a capital expenditure, as it would be, et cetera, et cetera.
That's correct.
Okay.
But that's still different from it being, you know, allocated specifically for that amount, because then we'll go and start considering what's already on the list, what's already not being funded.
That's right.
And that's different from, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, a legal question, Mr. Blair, if we were to pass a particular formulation as a first reading, and then we're to amend it at the second reading, for whatever reason we may have, is there a legal problem with that?
Well, I think tonight, it would probably just be best since a first reading to give guidance, but, but certainly, the second reading, you still have to have the public hearing, and so, any changes that council wishes to make between this reading and the reading on February third, you could certainly enact on February third.
Okay.
So, I just would ask, is there support for staff to even, I don't think that staff has, I understand that they, there is a direction they would like to go in, but just being a little bit more fluid, and if there is support for staff to just look at the data that we currently have, and just maybe be able to answer the questions more thoroughly when we have this discussion next month.
I mean, what specifically do you want us to look at?
Because, I mean, I, because at first, when we first got this coming into this fiscal year, was it was a priority to do a comp study, to look at it from the entire city standpoint, you know? So now we're talking about, you know, looking at specific groups or, you know, not doing the whole study, but, and I mean, well, funding the entire study, but also doing, you know, little pieces, segments of the city until we get the final study completed. So what is it exactly do you want us to go back and do? Because I don't want to bring them, have them do all this research and it's not really focused on a particular area.
Yeah, I don't know the area. I just know, I just throughout, we were having the discussion in the meeting that maybe employees earning under the fifty thousand dollar, maybe you all come back and say they're employees who've been here twenty years and they make thirty-five thousand dollars. I mean, I don't know.
But you're still going to have the folks who make fifty-one thousand or fifty-two thousand.
But we're always going to have that issue. You know, one thing that happened when we started the, when I, the living wage conversation was that one of the ways which didn't happen last year, and so this is why I'm going to bring this discussion up. When it was convenient to talk about compression and how that would impact employees and how when someone else received their, you know, ninety-five cent raise that someone else, you know, wouldn't. And as an employee for the city, I saw that fuel, you know, a lot of animosity among employees. But with just having a brief conversation with employees and asking them, you know, that I remember one employee out doing, you know, cutting, you know, the grass in the area I was at, and he was like, this person is making sixty cent less than me and I've been here, you know, over a decade. And my question was, but you now earn, based on your report, three dollars more than you were making before this started, right? And so part of it was the person, the other person earning more money is not going to change at this moment, the money that you are earning, right? And so fueling that kind of, you know, discussion, then I understand it. But it, it was just breeding negativity that didn't need to. And I think that there was a better PR message, but since for me, my thought process around this, since there were certain individuals that didn't want it to happen, that's why this was happening. I just think there's a more proactive approach. And I think that the individuals who are struggling at the lower end of the pay scale would benefit more than the, you know, extra hours that staff may have to put into being strategic. I don't know the answers. I may have some ideas. But again, I just wanted to throw it out there. And what typically, and this didn't happen last year with the four point one seven percent discussion either, was that staff come back with ideas. But to come back with ideas, you have to be open to it potentially happening.
And I, I'm comfortable with if there, if staff wants to give this, just for some thought given our conversation and come back within, on our early budget cycles. I, I just, I don't want this to get in the way of actually doing the study that we definitely prioritize getting done. And it sounds like there is some staff capacity issues here. And, and I, and I recognize that. There's just limits that we have on how much can be done. And I don't want us to, the, the long-term goal here is to look at everything across the board. It's been a long time and we, during the lunches, we heard it from people. I mean, the compression thing was very real to me, hearing it from a variety of income levels.
But so was low salaries.
Agreed. But I don't think, but I think we heard from low salaries among a lot of different salary ranges. That's why I don't feel like we can look at any one facet. I really don't want us to lose the focus of doing this comprehensive study and doing it expediently as possible.
And I would hope that, I don't know, I work at a pretty high capacity. So I don't understand not being able to do multiple things, but I hear you. All right, so. Are we?
Do we need a motion or what, what's the form?
There's a no vote tonight. It's just.
In terms of direction, I mean, are we, are, are majority of folks in support of the staff recommendation? Or we want to consider some of the other things that have been discussed?
Let me say, I, I am generally in favor of the staff recommendation. I would be open to talking about other funds, perhaps coming out of this surplus to, as Mayor Walker has it, to the equity fund or to the council, however we want to characterize it. But I see that as still in the category of a legitimate use of an, of a year-end surplus, rather than something that creates a new obligation year over year, as a salary change would.
Yeah, I mean, I guess in terms of direction, I mean, the conversation we just had was around Mayor Walker's suggestion of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for full-time employees. The other two pieces of that, those recommendations, the fifty-eight thousand to the equity fund and the eighty thousand to the human services, I guess, is there an appetite for those two items among council? I, I am in favor of, of both.
I'm basically in favor of both. I do want to investigate the human services program a little bit further.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I just don't know enough about it to, but I mean, I've got a couple of weeks to spend that and to spend doing that. But I know that one-time crisis assistance like that is something that has been in need historically. And it's, it's good to know that we even have that program. I would, I would like to explore some, some ideas also for having, for having an employee emergency fund of some sort. I know this is a very, very new idea that's just come up right now. But starting some sort of fund to help take care of our employees. I don't know. It's, it's just, I don't know if it could be now, it could be later, but yeah.
One additional thing to think about in terms, and I, I frankly was not, was not really thinking about or even aware of the housing, of the human services program until I saw Mayor Walker's email. But it reminds me that as part of the anti eviction effort in Richmond right now, part of the program that they've got is that they've got funds available to help people who are in an immediate crisis. And some of it is city money, but most of it is private money that has been raised, perhaps with city money as a seed or grant money, probably more accurately, as a seed. And if we're serious about the notion that evictions are one of the greatest sources of problems for affordable housing, there are times when, with the right controls, with the right kind of program, funds like a, like, like what's being described here could be extraordinarily useful. It may not be well done by the city, however. And maybe what needs to happen is to go looking for, looking to see how Richmond has done it. Because I, I know it's, they've not done it just with city money.
Well, and what was, if you happen to have it up, what was the data again about like the number of requests there were last year and like the?
About the emergency assistance?
Remember, it ranged from like five hundred to five thousand, which five thousand makes me think it's probably five, six, seven months of mortgage potentially.
Right.
So it's, it's at three hundred and twenty-five individuals. Callers from Charlottesville requested a hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine, and I'll send this.
Thank you. Let me just send.
There, there are, there are a number of programs already in existence in the city. Some administered by churches, like the Alliance for Interfaith Ministries and so on.
But it's not enough funding in any of those.
Oh, that's right. I, I agree. The, the question is, can we figure out a way or can, can the community figure out a way to increase funding? And to get perhaps some of the people who are contacting the city and for this fund to go to where there actually is some money. One of the things we found as we were starting up AIM many years ago was that one of the biggest challenges was that the same people were going from church to church to church to church. And so when they instead ran it all through an organization that was at the time called IRC, I'm not sure, it's not the Interpol Resources Center, it's something different, where, where they sent people to one place, they could get more money from one place than they would get hitting each priest's discretionary funds. And it was a problem that was able to be significantly ameliorated by having a citywide organization instead of individual little, little funds. And maybe some greater degree of organization would be, you know, could be used there or an existing organization could be facilitated. I don't know.
I hear that. I say, I guess my reaction would be, you know, that's a conversation we could have as the process of developing our affordable housing strategy moves forward. And I don't think what you said was in opposition to this. I just think, I, I would agree that that's a long-term goal, but the need is so great, you know, we should make that investment now as well, which I think is what you're saying. I agree long-term in our housing strategy, you know, the bigger you can get it, the more people you could serve.
But I think the, to answer some of your question, the reason that people were going from place to place was not because they were trying to, you know, take advantage of the system in any way.
That's not what he was saying.
That is not what I meant at all.
No, well, I'm just saying that it's because that they, the need is so great. What you're talking about is that individuals who have come together to say, in terms of the churches, that we are going to take some of the money that we get in the church to help fund this. MACA used to have a program, the city is doing a program, is that there, the need was always greater than the funding, even all of those organizations together. And it's back to what poverty produces. And, you know, the fact that those, when people cannot meet those basic needs, the ability to escape poverty, that article, I don't even, it's so much, but it was like in Atlantic or something, but it says it, and you know, Charlottesville being one of those places that actually getting out of poverty is almost non-existent for most people. But it says that it takes nearly twenty years of nothing happening for families to move from a, the space of generational poverty. And we know that most of our families have never been afforded that opportunity. What an emergency assistance or crisis intervention fund does is allow individuals, hopefully, the ability to stop an event that would, that could potentially make the rest of their lives kind of spiral out of control. And that's the, you know, the goal for those funds.
Would it be possible, Dr. Richardson, just to have some kind of summary, just kind of, just an update from that department in terms of just the trends and like what their, their thoughts are? Because I'm certainly willing to entertain that. I just like more information. This was new to me this afternoon when this was brought up. And I'm fine with the equity fund request.
I know for years, there was talk about really trying to do a one-stop shopping for emergency. Either through the Haven, through the city, through, I know there's been, we've been, there's been a lot of iterations of trying to make that happen.
Well, right now, the city staffs the hotline for four hours a day. And the Haven is responsible for making the payments on the city's behalf. So there is a collaborative effort with them. And I sent that information to you all.
Is that enough direction?
Yeah, if not, I'll.
No, if you have question, Mr. Cullen, it looks like he has a question.
I just wanted to be sure I understood the consensus and the, and the items you wanted us to follow up on. On my list, it was the human services fund and the equity fund. Is there another one that had a consensus of council for us to follow up on?
I don't think so.
Not in this scope. Follow up through other means.
I'm just wondering, for the three fifty where you were talking about to see, do a creative idea or what we wanted to do with the pay. I wonder if for purposes of this appropriation, if it makes sense to just allocate those dollars to the citywide reserve. And then that gives us time to actually look at the pool of people. If you, you know, if you're saying fifty thousand or less, that gives us a chance to look at that pool and see if, what impact three fifty would have, I mean, how many people?
Yeah, but it's not operational funds.
Right, but I'm saying if we put in the citywide reserve, then you guys, that gives us time to, to look at that. We can get the appropriation passed. And then if we need the two, the three fifty for, you know, to wrap that into the compensation or whatever we want to put in for the twenty-one budget, then the money's there. Otherwise, if we don't do something with it, it's going to fall to the CIP contingency. And I don't think we're going to have time between now and February third to come back with a plan that maybe you all would agree on. I'm just asking, what do you want to do with that? Or are you saying you want to leave it as it is and not break out the three fifty? I think that's some guidance we need to.
Well, I think you all said you would be interested in hearing.
I was talking about it for the budget cycle, not for this decision, not for the surplus decision.
I mean, I'm certainly open to figure out how that three hundred and fifty can be used to most effectively help people at that lowest pay scale. Without more information, I just don't know what that most effective use is. But I'm open, I'm open to continuing that discussion because I agree, I think the greatest priority is assisting at the lowest pay scale.
Yeah, but if you keep assisting at the lowest pay scale, you're going to further expand the compression piece. That's what I keep saying.
I hear that.
But they haven't been assisted.
All right. We'll, we'll look at it.
I mean, I just wish I, and I get it, you know, us, we, and I said this in our meeting, that we do this discussion every year, that this is like one-time expenses versus operational. And then we have this discussion every year that I can remember, even before I was on council. So I get that. But I guess, just understanding how there hasn't been any information given to me, and I've asked a lot of questions, that doesn't say that we're just not going to have this discussion once the compensation study is done. And that this would make it a worse discussion. And that we could do something really wrong that could mess up the compensation study. Those are not the answers any staff member has given to me. And if those had been the answers, that it would have been easier for me to just, you know, say, hold on.
And I guess all I'm suggesting is that for purposes of the year-end appropriation, if you take staff's recommendation to put the six fourteen in the citywide reserve, it doesn't force you to make any decision right now. It still gives you time to have this conversation and allow the appropriation to move forward, because the money's still in the reserve. It's not allocated for anything.
The six fourteen that's already there.
Pardon me?
The six fourteen that's already up there.
Correct.
Not adding to it.
Correct.
So we'd still be putting that same six twenty-four and whatever else we've just decided we might pull out more of.
Right.
To the, the transfer to the contingency.
Right. So it would just put that money in a citywide reserve. We could continue this conversation, whatever it looks like, whenever we get it. But we're not going to know that by February third. So by policy, if we don't do something, then it falls to the CIP contingency.
No, I understand that. I do.
Let's just say, reflecting what it shows anyway, then, you're saying how we could use it that way.
Yeah, I'm just offering that as an option, that if you let it go to the reserve, you still have options to talk about it.
Yeah, my question, just for council now, is that is there an appetite to continue the discussion? the discussion, to get the information from staff?
Personally, not for February 3rd, but as part of what's going to come out of the salary, compensation study, absolutely. And I appreciate the fact that there are a limited number of hours in your day. Only 26, right?
Yeah, that's all.
By February 3rd is, I don't feel, to come up with good creative solutions, I don't think it's enough time. I would be interested in seeing it go and then the entire amount going into that contingency, to hold it so that we could continue talking about this. And to come up with some, see if there are some creative solutions to things that we can do to help staff before the class and compensation study finishes. However, that doesn't necessarily mean raises across, and again, I understand, I'm, I'm learning more about compression, and there's a lot of pieces here I still need to understand more fully before I can go against staff recommendations. Which probably didn't give you a clear answer whatsoever, did it? Sorry.
So, I guess my question is, this is something I'm not discussing on the budget cycle, so is there an appetite for us to continue this discussion? For staff to have some information for us during the budget process?
In the budget cycle?
I fundamentally have problems with taking one-time allocation dollars to put into operational expenses without knowing what the continuous study stream of the budget is on a year-to-year basis.
But this is now the discussion of like if it was in contingency, and then if we were going to maybe have fewer dollars in the surplus when this fiscal year, what is that, 21 closed, because we have allocated some dollars towards staff. Right? So I'm just asking for, if you all can look at something to have as a presentation during the budget cycle, instead of saying we're going to wait two budget cycles to do anything, if that's possible.
Well, it's not them, it's HR have to do it, it's human resources.
Yeah, I'm just saying staff, there is like budget implications that they all have to work on too.
And I would just want to understand if it's going to prevent staff from being able to put the full throttle on this broader compensation study, I'd want to know before I'm asking them to do more.
What you're doing is doing competing projects against one another. You're doing a study of a certain amount of salary for certain folks, then you're going to be putting together RFP for the larger study, which is going to take a considerable amount of time. So what, what do you want? Do you want the smaller scale, or do you want the larger compensation study?
No, I just said, like, my priority is that we go full throttle on this broader RFP compensation study.
Because what it's doing is, you know, I mean, we just need direction. What do you want? And then...
Full throttle on the class and compensation study.
I think that's...
I agree.
So does that mean you want to move the, are you leaving it like this for the citywide reserve? Or are we changing anything, any dollars?
I think the only thing that was discussed, that there was consensus on, was looking at some of that funding for the equity fund that was identified.
The 58.
And the Human Services Program.
And the 80,000.
Right, and I, we do want more information on that, but...
So do you want that to come out of the 624, or did you want to rearrange something up above?
So the, for me, and I want to look at this again since, because that was based on having those allocations for staff, so I would like for staff to come, and, because instead of replenishing, you know, those dollars for the radio replacement fully, with the great need for that program, I would like for us to look at maybe funding that more, instead of with fewer dollars for the next. So if staff can be here to discuss that, and if you all can, yeah.
So you're talking about taking from the 614 to fund those other two things?
No, I just think we should discuss increasing, I want to discuss increasing that amount for the emergency assistance fund.
More than 80?
Mm-hmm. It's, it's available now. So I think so with the conversation around the fact that there were, in a four-month period, again, August 2019 to November 2019, I had just balanced out my suggestions. And so what I'm saying is that there was a request for $182,349. So if it's possible for us to, you know, look at putting more funding in that, I would...
Well, I just definitely want to hear from the staff.
I understand, and I sent you some information.
I would like to hear from staff in this area.
I got this information from them, but I understand.
Why would we deplete and not replenish our CIP contingency fund, instead of using what's left within the contingency to be able to put those dollars to those other things that you're talking about? I mean, the next emergency, where are we going to pull from? I mean, we were looking...
So that replenished was more money than is the baseline for that fund. That's what I heard in the meeting.
Yeah, but if we didn't have the funding in the contingency, we wouldn't have been able to do the radios, we wouldn't have been able to purchase, I know it's a sore subject, pay for the parking deck on, on Market Street.
I mean, I understand that, but what I'm asking is that we just look at some of this funding and make sure that we're taking care of people in the process. So whether that's community members who we know that this, this crisis funding is very helpful to, or whether it's employees and salary increases.
Oh yeah, I'm saying, that, that's fine, but I'm just saying, I just think that we need to replenish those funds that we won't go and have the impact on our overall budget in a fiscal year if something happens, or something comes up that we have to purchase. What I'm saying is, when you look at your bottom line, why wouldn't you take it from your bottom line?
I am open to staff suggestions about wherever we take it from, I just would like for us to allocate it towards something related to taking care of people.
I'm trying to do that.
Thank you.
But I just don't want to negatively impact our budget on certain things that we're trying to do, that's going to be a one-time expense, that's going to be compounding over time. What I'm trying to do is look at ways that we can replenish funds, as well as look at other funding mechanisms that we can continue to do great things for not only our employees, but also, you know, our community. As we talked about, you know, even with the funding for CAF.
So I guess you all can just let us know where you all would want us to take it from.
I mean, my suggestion would be, if you want to allocate more money, you would take it from the dollars we have allocated to the citywide reserve. So basically, between items three and four, there's a million 14 that we had to go to the citywide reserve. And so if you wanted to pull something out of there, over and above, so I think, I mean, is the suggestion here that 500,000 goes to the CIP contingency? And then the 58, 766 goes to the equity fund, right? And then originally, it was 80,000 that went to Human Services? Do I have that math right?
Yeah.
And then if you did anything over and above the 80, I think you would look at the citywide reserve. And that would be up to you all, how much money you wanted.
Let me just say, I'm, I am not sold on the idea, I mean, because I just don't understand the, the way the Human Services Program works. I'm not sold on us putting more money into a program that I don't understand yet. Now, maybe between now and February 3rd, all will be made clear to me, but in terms of, if you're looking for what might garner three votes right now, today, I would not be a vote for that. But I'm not sure you need three votes, I don't know, you don't need that answer today. I think it's fair to say that there is enough interest in it, so that we would like to know more. I'm going to try to find out some more through some of my sources, but maybe we can find out more.
And I sent you the email, and hopefully staff will be here, you know, to discuss it.
And even if you keep it in the citywide reserve, there's nothing that prevents you February 3rd, or February, whatever the next meet, or March, or April, from coming back and saying, we want to allocate X dollars out of the citywide reserve to that. So it doesn't have to be February 3rd deadline, it's just, if we put it in the reserve, this is exactly what it's for, is to give you flexibility to address things as they come up.
Well, I would hope that we would make this a priority, because again, once we look at the data and if you reach out to staff or even get more information, the need is great. All right, so where are we? So there's a no vote. And I think it's a clear nail.
So for February 3rd, we're going to add those two items, the CIP contingency will change to 500, and we're going to add two lines, one is 58, 766 to equity, is that the right number? And then 82, Human Services, or we're not doing Human Services?
Well, it sounds like we can do it.
I would suggest putting the 80 in Human Services, just preliminarily for the council at your, your meeting, and you can change that.
So we'll just add those two lines for now, right?
Yeah.
And then we need to have staff come back to talk about the Human Services account?
That's what they would like.
Was that the only other follow-up?
I think so.
Okay.
Appreciate, well, I appreciate you all, I don't want to speak on them, I'm sure they do too, but thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now we have a resolution for it.
Yeah, the resolution, I'm trying to remember. The resolution we were going to have is on the, we're still in programs. Remember?
You gave me...
I think I did hand it to you, yes, sir.
Okay, so while we're waiting for that, we did have Mr. Thompson, is he still, would you like to come up? Just had a brief update on the senior center, senior center facility, is that okay for us to do?
Absolutely, sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for your service and a good, robust discussion, hopefully this will be a little bit easier for everybody. Madam Mayor, Counselors, Dr. Richardson, thank you for inviting me to give you a little update on what's happening with the center at Belvedere, the new senior community center that we are opening in April. I'm Peter Thompson, I'm the great pleasure of serving as the Executive Director of the center for over 20 years now. And I want to thank Charlottesville for its investment in building the center at Belvedere, if you're not aware, the city did invest 1.2 million dollars in building our new center at Belvedere. And along with 2 million dollars from Almarone County, that proved to be an important catalyst for what has now been about 13 million dollars of additional private philanthropy, that along with selling our current property and some long-term loans, we'll be able to build this new 24 million dollar project. So the city's 1.2 million dollars, a quick math, that's 5% of the overall projects, that's important, but it's a pretty good example of a public, public-private partnership, in that it's a 5% investment by the city, but city residents get 100% of the benefits out of it. I think that's something that any investor would take anytime, so it's something the city and Almarone County can certainly be proud of. And importantly, the impact is much more, of course, than just dollars, it's all about serving people. And aging is the biggest demographic the city of Charlottesville and our local communities face, as is the rest of the state and the country, according to Weldon Cooper Center. Here in the city, the 65-plus population in the year 2010 was about 4,000, it's almost doubled to about 7,500 today, and is projected to grow to another, excuse me, to about 6,000 a day, and projected to grow to about 7,500 by 2030. So it is the biggest demographic issue we're facing. And the key is so much, there's a whole lot of more older adults, the key is how can we keep our older adult population as independent as possible, as long as possible, because that's not all what we would want for ourselves and for our families and our friends. And research consistently shows that seniors that are active and engaged will have lower health costs and have lower demand on social services, so there's a good return on investment in that as well, as well as just doing the right thing for our fellow citizens. And the center does what research consistently shows are the keys to helping seniors stay active, engaged, continue to have purpose in life, stay socially engaged, stay intellectually stimulated, and stay physically active. Whoever coin use it or lose it, you know, really nailed it, because that's really what successful aging is all about, and it's what we do. And a brief history on the center, for those who aren't as familiar, we are celebrating our 60th birthday on Valentine's Day next month. We are one of the longest continually operating senior centers in the country, we're one of the first 200 founded, there's now about 12,000, and we're the longest continually operating senior center in the state of Virginia. We're one of less than 1% of senior centers nationwide that are nationally accredited. We won the United Way Jefferson Area Nonprofit Excellence in Leadership Award, and we've won multiple state best practices award here in the Commonwealth. And we have grown throughout our history to meet the needs of our community, we have moved four times, and we're on the cusp of having to do that a fifth time, because today we serve between 8,000 to 9,000 unique users every year, and about 100,000 duplicated, duplicated participants come through our programs each and every year, so it's a busy place. And we have never gotten any public funding for our operation throughout our 60-year history, which is highly unusual, we're of only two other senior centers nationwide out of the 12,000 that get no public funding. So our long history has been something the city and the county have benefited from, thanks to a private nonprofit. In fact, every city that the city of Charlottesville benchmarks with for excellence, fully fund their senior community centers. They build the capital investment, they have to do the placement costs, they have to do the operating costs, year after year after year. So you can imagine how much that is, our budget is a million dollars a year today, it's going to be up to 2 million dollars, we're building a 24 million dollar building, you can do the math pretty quickly about how much the center has been able to meet the needs of the community without city and county investment up till this point. So people often then ask, why did the senior center ask for city and county funding for the new center? We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we're owned by the community to serve the community, and our owners told us, when we realized that our current facility was not going to meet the needs of the community going forward, as much as we've loved it for 28 years, it's just not big enough for the growth that we're facing, that we needed public investment to be able to build what we realize our community was going to need. And you won't be surprised that Older Americans Act at the federal level states that building and rebuilding senior community centers should be one of the biggest priorities in our country to help meet this growing aging population. And you won't be surprised that Congress has allocated exactly nothing for that, decade after decade after decade, and the state has not picked that up as what, either. So despite looking at those levels, we can't come to the city and county to look for that public investment. We were very fortunate at that time, and I want to thank Maurice Jones and Mike Murphy, Kristen Zakos, Mike Signer, Wes Bellamy, and Kath Galvin, who are all very big supporters of the idea, as they learned more about it, of why this made sense. And through that budget cycle four years ago, we had folks, you know, every time, show up to speak in favor of the funding, and there wasn't a single time that anybody ever spoke out in favor, oh, excuse me, opposed to it. So it was something that clearly the city and county residents were very supportive of. You were just talking a lot about the CIP, among many other things, you well know that the CIP is designed to be aligned with strategic priorities and city council vision. So what I'm going to refer to is the council documents of three and four years ago, they have been updated some, but when we deployed for the funding three years ago, it was very much aligned with what the city council vision was and the strategic plan, and this way I can also share a little bit of what's going to be happening at the new center at Belvedere, and then I'll close a little bit with our update. So some of the language that was in the city council vision at that time was a connected community, for citizens of all ages. The center does focus on serving people age 50 and better, but we today, particularly with the new center at Belvedere, envision a community hub that is open to all ages and open to all people. It is built to be as such, we're going to be open seven days and 80 hours a week, a 50% growth on what we're able to do today. So that will be a much more active community hub for people who are working or in school during traditional times, be able to benefit from us in the evenings and the weekends. We have a Green Berries Cafe that'll be open every... We have a Green Berets Cafe that'll be open every hour we're open. Everything you enjoy at Green Berets, plus beer and wine. Great big atrium, public seating, which you don't have to purchase anything at Green Berets. You can just come and hang out in the atrium and be with your fellows and make the magic happen for people of all ages. So, that's a big part of what we envision. We also will continue to build a Mary P. Rees Scholarship Fund to make sure anybody who has financial need... It's a simple honor system, we just fill out the same form anyone else does, and we underwrite those costs thanks to the Rees Scholarship Fund. One of the other things was America's healthiest city and considering health in all public policies and practices and programs. We, of course, very much look at aging and health as a holistic view, but typically with this language, people think of physical fitness. Today, the Center does that, but we have no spaces that are properly built for it. The new Center will have an equipped fitness room with a whole suite of strength training machines. The number-one reason people become dependent and live in nursing homes is they lose the ability to care for themselves, and that's usually a simple strength issue. That's not natural aging, it's not necessary, but it's very hard for a lot of people who cannot afford private fitness clubs or country clubs. Where do they go? So, the Center will be able to be one of those accessible places with an equipped fitness room and two proper group exercise rooms with proper sprung floors and everything else really as nice as any club here in town. A Center for Lifelong Learning, certainly Charlottesville's always been a home for that. The new Center will have a suite of seven learning centers and conference rooms for our own current affairs discussion, book discussion, and philosophy discussion, safe driving classes, and tax aid, and what things that we do, and also opening up to many partners that we'll talk about here in a minute. A cultural and creative space, the new Center will have a very nice art studio for our visual arts programming and a really nice art gallery display space that we do not have today, both for our own artists and all the different community, the Pastellas Group and the Watercolor Guild and other people who'd like to be able to display their space so they can sell their artwork, to be able to buy supplies and continue to hone their craft. So, the Center will be one of those community hubs for that. Certainly, being a green center is something that's... Green city is something that's important to all of us. This week, I was just on site today and found out this week, our local sun tribe will start installing the solar array on our center roof, which will account for about 50% on average over the course of a year for our energy needs, which is simply the right thing to do. We have more efficient HVAC systems, there's a lot of natural light in the building to save funds and be more environmentally friendly and economically sustainable. While the city continues to look at trying to do more in many ways with tech and other businesses like that, you know, you can't put all your eggs in one basket, and an economically sustainable city also needs to be friendly to all ages. And indeed, some of the biggest entrepreneurial successes are people actually over 50. It's not all the, you know, the 18-year-old Harvard dropout that's doing those types of startups. It's often our older adults. And of course, a lot of those younger folks want to bring their parents and grandparents here as well, and we need it to be an age-friendly community for them as well. And then, I want to emphasize certainly building collaborative partnerships. First of all, it's a great partnership with the County of Almarle and one that was very easy. City and, you know, we just kind of brokered that if the city and county both support, we're going to get it made, done. We have a Centerra Family Medicine in the new Center. It's not a geriatric clinic, it'll be open to all ages. So, anybody can come, one of you, you can bring your children, your grandchildren, your parents, or whoever it might be. That's very purposeful to meet that community hub feel. We've already signed an agreement with the Wednesday Music Club, one of the oldest organizations in our community at almost 100 years, and their partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club and many others, which is not just, they're providing youth tutoring. And they're going to be doing 2025 youth recitals on Sundays at the new Center of Belvedere for promising youth that otherwise would not be able to afford private tutoring, but are getting scholarships through the Wednesday Music Club. They'll be doing all those programs at the new Center of Belvedere. We'll continue to do more with our friends at Region 10. I leave you with some literature. There's a great letter from one of our Region 10 friends about how some of our friends from Region 10 come to the Center on a regular basis and the impact that makes on them as well as on us. The Charlottesville Youth Symphony will be having its summer concert at the new Center this summer. Literacy Volunteers at Charlottesville Almarle's doing a little mini-conference on literacy services in the Center because we have that suite of classrooms. We'll be able to do more with our friends at JABA, such as Chronic Disease Self-Management, which is an evidence-based program that they have a license to, but we'll be able to do at the Center. Matter Balance, which is an evidence-based program that we have a license for that we'll be able to deliver in a more appropriate space, and continue to do more with the Charlottesville Area Alliance with the city of Charlottesville as a member of the WHOARP Age Friendly Network to build a more age-friendly community from all perspectives. We look forward to more conversations with City Social Service and Parks and Rec. We're right up the road from Penn Park. We're very convenient to McIntyre Park and the new Botanical Gardens. We look forward to some partnerships with them. Saka's right up the road, building a new indoor/outdoor soccer program for adults and youth that we'll be able to be doing more with. And having the proper Performing Arts Auditorium that I missed when I talked about the creative side. We have a 400-seat Performing Arts Auditorium designed for the performing arts, for our programming, but also to be able to open up for any number of community activities, such as the Youth Symphony, Wednesday Music Club, youth recitals, Film Festival, we'll have a proper space to be able to be a venue for folks like them. There's so many groups in town, Camera Club, the International Folk Dance, don't have any place to meet. They'll be able to meet at the Center at a very affordable rate. And it'll be a great rental hall and a banquet hall. Our city and county Parks and Recs folks say that one of the biggest things that they turn people away is banquet space that's affordable when you think of how few people can afford some of the more high-end opportunities for rental in our community. In fact, we're already one of the most popular places for quinceañeras. And, excuse me, my mother was from Montreal, so French was my second language. My Spanish accent's not quite as good. But because we're a very affordable place and welcoming place for folks of many backgrounds. So, the Center of Belvedere will continue to focus on people age 50 and better, but we very much envision it being a more community hub where people of all kinds of description can come together on their terms and just make the magic happen in the way they want to be able to do it. We'll just create that hub to be able to do it. You know, our community still, as we've talked about a lot this evening, and we often, and will continue to, has a lot of bridges that we need to build, and we need places to do that. And the Center of Belvedere cannot be that only place. We need many places for people to be able to choose, to come and break bread with their fellows, learn with one another, learn from another, socialize with one another. And I can certainly tell you that at the Center, you know, I know people who might live in a nice neighborhood and might be able to afford a cruise in the wintertime. And I know some of the folks who are on scholarship at the Center because they can't afford $140 a year in dues because we have about 12% of our folks on scholarship. They're breaking bread with each other, and they don't know or care. And I don't know a lot of place in Charlottesville where I see that interaction happen. So, we excited about building on that. We're also very looking forward to working with Mr. Williams, the new CAT Director, and Ms. Shelton, we're meeting in a couple of weeks to talk about how Route 11, which runs up Rio Road, will come right to the Center of Belvedere. You are hopefully aware, and you heard a woman earlier tonight, about the challenges of our public bus system and how there's a lot of just dead ends and nonsensical things about it. One of them right now is that the Center of Belvedere will only be served in one direction instead of a round trip. Complicated issue, we'll talk about another day. I hope Mr. Williams will be able to resolve that for us because it's not going to make a lot of sense for somebody from downtown to get to the Center of Belvedere and not be able to get back home. So, we're working on that solution. We look forward to working with the city on that. So, that's real quick, we are actually under budget on this project. Whoa, we are actually 13 months into a 16-months... Excuse me, 12 months into 13-month schedule. 12 into 16, we're actually going to get ahead and open about a month early, three months from now in April. So, we are both under budget and ahead of schedule. I think that's an incredible tribute to the team that we put in place. And we're really looking forward... Some of you have already been there. Dr. Richardson and Ms. Shelton came in an open house in November. A few of you have already signed up for some tours. And then, I've got some materials. Brian, can I just leave with you to hand around? Thank you. One for each counselor, one for Dr. Richardson, that has some literature. It has a letter from our friend at Region 10. There's a letter inviting you to come and tour the Center well with some upcoming dates. And my information, we'd hope that you can come and join us. And if appropriate, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
That's great.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the tour.
I know Ms. Smiths Hill and Ms. Gill are coming soon. I hope the rest of you can join us as well. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me like you all. Emails use the best way to start, even if it's a scheduled phone conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, we are back to the resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We all got an email, I think, that reminded us of the fact that there are a number of bills that are currently before the Virginia General Assembly, and there is a legislative initiative going on under the name of "We Are Still In", that we actually first signed on to in 2017. And this group is asking for, as Ms. Cruz earlier talked about, a resolution endorsing the "We Are Still In" letter to the Virginia General Assembly. And I would like to make that motion. The resolution would read as follows. Whereas on June 19, 2017, the Charlottesville City Council adopted a resolution endorsing the principles of the 2015 Paris Agreement within the UN Framework Convention on Climate Change. And whereas the Virginia General Assembly is considering a number of pieces of legislation that address the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, clean energy standards, greater customer access to cleaner energy, and policies and programs that reduce transportation-related emissions. And whereas the Charlottesville City Council's 2020 Statement of Legislative Positions includes a number of provisions relating to clean energy, including participation in the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. And whereas "We Are Still In" is a coalition of cities, universities, states, tribes, businesses, healthcare organizations, and faith groups that oppose the United States withdrawal from the 2015 Paris Agreement. And whereas "We Are Still In" is urging city and town councils in Virginia to endorse the attached letter to be sent to the Virginia General Assembly endorsing clean energy standards, greater customer access to cleaner energy, policies and programs that reduce transportation-related emissions, and to join the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of Charlottesville, Virginia hereby endorses the "We Are Still In" letter attached to this resolution and asks the Mayor of Charlottesville to sign the correspondence on behalf of the Council and to send a copy to delegate Sally Hudson and Senator Creed Eads. And that would be my motion.
Okay. Are there any clarifying questions or discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Any other business? All right. Now, we have matters by the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? All right, closing matters by the public. Have a good evening, meet and greet.